And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Welcome to the Weathersfield Select Board Meeting. Today is January 27. Agenda review. Any corrections, additions, or reorganization to the agenda? Mr. Fuller.
I have two. There was a motion at a previous meeting to table the decision for the salt shed to be for tonight. It's not on the agenda. And the second one is, I submitted a letter to the board. I'd like that taken up under other business. See what the board would like to do or not do with that.
Where do you want the motion to table?
I don't know. I.
You want that tonight or you want that next time?
No, no, no. The salt shed was at a previous meeting. It was supposed to be on for tonight. There was supposed to be a decision made. No one has contacted me about it. And I thought the deadline was February 1st. And.
May I respond?
Yes.
Okay. So Martha has submitted an extension for that project. So that project has been extended. And she will be reaching out to you to get feedback on an alternative.
Well, we've already made a payment on that bill, right?
Yeah, it's a grant. So payments have gone out. But we can still do. We can still work on alternatives for that project. And that's what's in motion right now, which is what the board requested.
And it's not on the agenda because it's not ready.
It's not ready, no.
At this point in time?
Yep.
Okay. Is that satisfactory?
I don't know. I don't know what it. I haven't been contacted, so I don't know.
Do we need to continue that? It's supposed to be on the agenda for tonight. Do we need to, under other business perhaps, continue that to a date to be determined?
I think that would be the right thing to do. The project has been extended. So I think it's just a matter of the engineer working with to develop an alternative. Another alternative.
Okay. We'll do those both under any other business. Comments from Select Board Town Manager Citizens? Topic's not on the agenda. Select Board, any topics? Any comments?
Is there any decision about the Select Board participating in the town challenge?
When is that?
Oh, you would have to ask me. Thank you. Oh, come on. Come on. It's a town event. It's fun. It's always a great fun time.
Fun is always.
And we've got kids who show up for that. I'm one of the teams, so it's not like they're. You know, it's not like you can't do this.
No, they're typically my kids, and that's where the problem. Ah, I mean, I'd be interested if Dave did the spelling questions. I'd be good.
I'm not hearing much.
I'm not hearing much.
I'm not seeing a bunch of hands. I'll do it. I'll do it. I'll do it.
I'll be retired.
And you'll be retired.
Town Manager comments?
I can reserve them until my Town Manager report.
Okay. Citizens? Topics not on the agenda. Any citizens have any issues, topics not on the agenda, they'd like to discuss with the board? V L, good evening. How are you tonight?
Here to. Here to listen.
For those of you who don't know, V L, V L is our new House Rep, Windsor County. Okay. Review minutes, previous meeting. Do I hear a motion for 1925?
Yes.
Do I hear a second? Motion's been made in second to approve the minutes of 1925. There's a bunch of stuff in here, I think, that needs to be looked at. The first thing that I noticed was the. Within your. Your plan for the Fire Department, the 80,000 and 30,000, or 50,000, 30,000 had gotten flipped on how those.
Okay.
Worked within here. And there was four or five other things in here that I came across. This is the one thing where the minutes would be handy to have printed out, and I suppose I could have done that.
So I'll review the minutes, just for the sake of time, and then I'll work with Nicole to make corrections. If the board wishes to table them tonight, we can make those corrections before the next meeting.
And I'll get with Brandon Nicole and point them out. They're minor, but.
Are they all in the Fire Department section?
No, no. They're sprinkled throughout the minutes, all over the place. There was, yeah. There were quite a few that I came up with. Anyway, normally don't see that.
I think my.
That's what you want to do? That's going to slow us down considerably. Where we could, this could be done, and we could bring it back at another time, just so you know.
Can you at least just point out what they are?
Well, I just pointed out one of them. The proposed allocation of 30,000 for leadership positions, 50,000 for individual fighter-fighters. That is backwards, correct?
That is backwards, and we are revising that further. But based on the conversation that night, that does need to be flipped.
Okay.
And I'm not completely sure if those are the correct numbers, which these numbers are. We were throwing in a lot of numbers out there, Nicole. So in your defense, there was a lot of numbers that were talked about that night.
If somebody moves a table, both sets of minutes, I have a problem with the second set. So I think we should move on. There's people here, and I think we should table them both. So I'm making that motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second to table minutes. Both sets of minutes, I think you said? The other set of minutes is for 11425?
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of tabling both sets of minutes till the next meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? Motion, I believe everybody. Nate, do you vote? You voted okay? Okay. Motion carries. Minutes are tabled. Public hearing, commercial accessory dwelling unit bylaw. Ryan, you're up.
Do you want to open the hearing, or do you want me to give an intro?
I will open the hearing. Notice of public hearing, Martin Memorial Hall, 5259 Route 5, Escutney, Vermont, 05030. Remote option Zoom details below. Monday, January 27, 2025, at 6:30. A public hearing before the Weathersfield Select Board will be held at the town office in Escutney on Monday, January 27, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. to consider the adoption of the following proposed amendments to the Weathersfield zoning bylaws. Statement of purpose. Purpose of adding commercial accessory dwelling unit bylaw is to further the goals of the Housing Chapter of the town plan, which include providing a diversity of housing options for all income levels while minimizing the pressure on the land by focusing on increasing housing in areas where development exists. Geographical areas affected. All lands within the town of Weathersfield are affected by these amendments. Section headings, Section 2.5, Table of Districts and Uses, Article 4, Specific Use Standards, Article 7, Definitions. The above application is available for inspection at the town office in Escutney. Persons wishing to be heard and participate in the hearing may do so in person or be represented by an agent or an attorney. Communications about the above amendments may be filed in writing with the Land Use Administrator or at the hearing. Due to public demand in COVID-19, the town has changed its public meeting platform. We do have Zoom. I'm not going to read all of that. We do have Zoom meetings. I think everybody's pretty well up to speed on that. And anybody that's not already here or listening isn't going to be served by that statement. Take it away, Ryan.
Okay. So the Planning Commission is proposing a new bylaw. They call it a commercial accessory dwelling unit. And so if you're not familiar, the accessory dwelling units are a way that someone with a single-family residence can have an in-law apartment or turn an accessory structure into an apartment of sorts. It could be rented, or owner occupied, or it's just empty. A lot of people do this to bring in their parents as they get elderly, or as an option for their children to live in Vermont or in Weathersfield. It's, so what's proposed here is a commercial accessory dwelling unit. Basically, they wanted to allow for other areas within a commercial building, usually the upper floor, or something like that, to be used for residential purposes. So we see this a lot in other towns where there's maybe more of a downtown strip and there's stores, and then all the floors above are typically residential, or something like that. So what this is, is basically to allow that very specific thing, residential use of a portion of a commercial space. So one of the, I think the primary criteria or standard for that is that the main entrance, on the main level of the building, is the commercial space, and any area that's converted to residential isn't that storefront or main entrance. This was also an alternative to a mixed-use category. So in the table of uses, a lot of towns will have a mixed-use, which is just, it gets more complicated than just this item. So instead of doing that, they created a commercial accessory dwelling unit for that purpose. So that's what's before the board.
Any questions? Mr. Fuller.
Is there a maximum amount of residential use connected to the commercial use?
So there's a maximum amount of the space that can be used. It's not a number of dwelling units, but rather a percentage of the main floor, if it was going to be that, or just the floors above or below. So there's not a limit on the number of units that they can have, but there's other things that might limit it. I think one of the major things is limiting is wastewater, stuff like that.
Second question. Would it be possible that the building would not be successful commercially and that it would be entirely residential?
So it could be if the business went out, and those residential units could remain as long as it's still a commercial building, meaning it hasn't been permitted for a residential building. Multifamily would be what you're referring to. So it would still need to be a commercial space. And so if that business went out, it's still a commercial building, and a commercial business would move in.
If I can. I think the intent there, Dave, was that the commercial space remained, and that commercial space could not be converted. Brian, is that correct?
That was my understanding of this.
That was what I was, because we have such limited commercial space in town anyway.
Correct.
So would it be, that's when I asked. Would it be? Let's face it. I mean, commercial buildings are owned by people that need to make money. So if you can't make money, we don't really have that good track record soliciting businesses. But we do have a, I think there's a really big demand on residential. So that's why I asked.
Yeah. The other thing is, it wouldn't be under this bylaw. Basically, they might still be able to do that, but they would have to apply for a multifamily residence. But yeah, this inherently needs to have a commercial component.
Have you ever heard of, maybe not, but probably DeForest did. Do you remember the Echo Housing? It stood for something. Elderly Conservation Housing, whatever. It was meant for, it was one on my road, where Dow Tilsen had his mother, or he wanted to live, and they, so it was okayed even under the zoning, to put a portable home, separate and apart from the original home. But the deal was, when the elderly person passed away, that that was to be removed.
Right.
I'm not sure that that happened, but I'm just. It's forced shaking head now. So that was the intent.
Yeah.
Of helping what you said, more housing opportunity for your in-laws, or something. I heard you say that.
Right, yeah.
So. I don't know. That's not still alive, Echo Housing, somewhere?
No. But I think the accessory dwelling units might have grown out of that. And basically, the state has mandated that all zoning allows for accessory dwelling units for a single-family home.
And this particular bylaw is dealing specifically with commercial, not residential.
Right.
Rika.
So I have a couple of questions. Should the business fail, and nobody, no commercial enterprise takes over that space? In other words, that first floor is empty, does that in any way have a bearing on what becomes of the residences? Or is it still categorized as a commercial building?
Well, the permit that applies to the property is still, would fall under this commercial accessory use. So they would, first of all, this is an accessory use. So there would be a permit for the principal use, whatever that business is. And if they decided to get a commercial accessory dwelling unit, or multiple, those would both be in effect. And if that business went out and nothing came in to fill it, that's still the permit that's on file. And so for it to change to anything else, they would need to take out a new permit. So there is, in certain districts, an opportunity for someone to say, there's a commercial building, the business goes away, and they have to come back in to get a new permit for a multifamily home, to convert the whole thing to residential. So that's possible, but not through this bylaw. If the commercial business goes away, they still have a permit for that commercial business and this accessory dwelling unit.
There was reference in several places that, about the need for accessory dwelling units in general, and that they're generally more affordable, that they're considered to be, or hopefully would be considered to be, affordable housing. Is there anything that actually stipulates that it has to be affordable housing? Or?
Not in this bylaw. There might be a circumstance where someone comes in for an application, and they want to create affordable housing and stuff like that, where if it goes in front of the Development Review Board, they might be able to put conditions on it so that it remains that way. But no, that's not addressed through here. So they could make expensive or market-rate accessory dwelling units through this.
And that doesn't defeat the purpose of?
Well, I think it's more, it's the opportunity, just like the accessory dwelling units, it provides an opportunity for someone to be able to do those things, but it doesn't mandate that it has to be that way.
And my third question was, I noticed that the both residential ADUs and commercial ADUs will be now included in the industrial zone. But in fact, there are no provisions for any residential housing in the industrial zone.
Right. Yeah. So the residential accessory dwelling unit, in that case, would only apply to an existing residential house.
Right.
So there certainly are some of those. And basically, state mandates that any single-family residence can have an accessory dwelling unit. So we can't prohibit it that way. Does that make sense?
And the other side of it is, the intent of the industrial zone is commercial activity.
Right.
And not to mix. In fact, I think we at one time had conversations with the Planning Commission about, and you do see it in the highway commercial zone, a residential structure in a highway commercial zone is a conditional use accessory to the commercial development of the land. You have to have a business to put a residence on that. But in the industrial zone, we felt that that was reserved for industrial activity and not housing.
Right. It's, I mean, it very specifically says that.
Yes.
Single-family, multifamily, et cetera, two families are not permitted.
That's correct.
And so that's why I wonder, isn't this sort of a conflict between saying, well, you can't have something that starts out being a residence, but you can do an accessory residence?
It's within a commercial structure, and the commercial activity must remain.
Okay.
And only, and as he stated in the beginning, it's a limited size.
Yeah.
The other aspect is, the industrial zone is different in its requirement for a commercial accessory dwelling unit, in that they need to go before the Development Review Board for that, where the other ones are administrative. So that's where they would be able to put conditions on the permit to address the concerns that the industrial use might have. Because the reason that you don't want the mixing is because the industrial uses don't want to be burdened by being near residences, and they want to be able to operate. And so to that same point, that's why they're going, they have to go to the Development Review Board, so that they can evaluate what is the use and what kind of measures are in place to protect the residential use as well as the industrial use. But the residential accessory, that is just to clarify at the point that if you do have a single-family residence in the industrial district, then you, state mandates you still have the right to have an accessory dwelling unit. So that's why that got added to the industrial.
Would these be residences that were in place before the categorization of an industrial zone happened?
Right. Yeah. So they're basically considered an existing non-conforming use.
I see. Okay. That was not clear to me.
And the language on non-conforming would not permit the nonconformance to be made any greater, which means you couldn't add necessarily to the structure, but you could do an internal conversion to an apartment.
Uh huh. Yes, I saw that you couldn't change the footprint. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody? DeForest? We beat you to it, Todd.
I don't have a question. My name is DeForest Burce. I'm heartily in favor of this proposed zoning amendment for three reasons. It will allow Weathersfield to increase its housing stock at a time when we desperately need it, and it does so without consuming additional land. And it'll provide an additional revenue stream for the businesses that host the units. In my opinion, it's a win-win-win, and I strongly urge the board to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd?
First, I just had a few questions.
Can you please go up to the lectern?
Yeah. First, I just had a few questions, as I read through it, so that I was sure that I understood the language as it's proposed. So what I'm wondering is, can the commercial accessory dwelling unit be located in more than one building on the same property? That's not clear to me if it can be. So could we have some dwelling units in one building and some more in another? That's a question.
Ryan or Todd, you want to take it?
Take a stab at it, because it doesn't say.
So yes, I think it would be allowed. They're allowed to have accessory, or commercial accessory dwelling units in an accessory building, as long as that accessory building is for commercial purposes.
So if, so that in the case that there was an accessory building, we would be having accessory uses to an accessory use?
You got it.
Okay. So that doesn't, that's problematic, problematic to administer. And then in the standards, they talk about ground-level floor and first floor, and they intermingle those in the standards. So I'm wondering, when we say, do we mean the same thing, ground-level floor and first floor? Is it, do we intend to put those together?
Not necessarily. Could you point out the specific?
In the standards.
Yeah.
Of 4-1, the first reference there of where they're located is the ground-level floor. Do you see ground-level floor?
Is there a 2? 2, 4, 1?
Ground-level floor. Okay. So that's where we want to have the commercial use. And then we go on to say, in number 3, we can occupy multiple floors above or below the first floor. So I just want to make sure that I understand what we mean. Do we, I think we probably mean the same thing. Like, the ground floor or the primary floor means the same for both of those?
Right. I think the intention is that you would be able to also use basement space or something that's not the primary business.
So if I could just. Yeah, take a shot.
I think part of that came from, I think, reminding the name of the business, the what do we care?
Yeah, the Twin Line Towering.
Twin Line, where the building is a bank building, where they essentially occupy the basement floor and part of that second floor. And I think that's where some of that language came from, because of that specific building. Because I believe they asked for dwelling, accessory dwelling units there, it was originally defined, and I think that was part of the process in that language. May not be most eloquently written, but I think that's where that bank building, part of that discussion of the ground floor below or the floor above came from. It might not be very clear there, but that was the intent.
Okay. So really, the commercial use would be on a floor, and the accessory dwelling units could be on any other floor?
Well, we were specifically trying to make sure that the commercial use is on the main.
Main, okay.
Whether that's the first or the ground, or wherever it is. That main entrance should be the.
Todd, I think the one we talked about, to kind of get our vision on that, was the store in Perkinsville. You used to have the store, and you had the post office. But if you look at that from the street, you've got a storefront. That would, that gets retained. That cannot be the living space. You could add one in the back, based on the dimensions we allowed, and upstairs. And if, I don't think there's a basement in that building, but if there was, you could.
If there was a basement, they could have dwelling units down there.
But that first-floor entry level, entry face has to stay commercial.
Okay. And then, just to dig into what Ryan mentioned before, there's nothing in here that does talk about size. So the only, the only size restriction that this bylaw, as proposed, has in it, is that the accessory dwelling units have to be within the footprint of the structure. So we could have, anyway, just to correct everybody, there is no size limit on this. There is, there is, as part of residential dwelling units.
Right.
But not as part of commercial accessory.
Ryan, you respond to that?
Yeah. So we had, at one point, been talking about how to allow for residential uses on that primary commercial floor. And so what was?
Ryan, sorry, the people online can't hear you unless you're at the podium.
Okay.
I don't mean to interrupt. I just want to make sure.
So that's okay. Those were my questions. And then, when we get to comments, give me another, give me another few more.
Yeah, so that was incorrectly stated. At one point, number 2, under the standards, floor usage, the board was trying to figure out a way to allow for residential usage on that floor with a percentage of the floor space. And it got complicated, and it, that's been stricken. So there is no percentage of floor space at this point. There was at one point, but I was incorrect. That's, it's only, the primary floor is for commercial purposes only.
Okay?
No, no, I'm just thinking. You're already just.
Okay. Anybody else?
I don't have any more questions.
Go ahead. You, go ahead, Todd. You can come up and comment.
So I just have a few sentences I'll read, because that'll be easier for me. The bylaw amendment as proposed does not provide a means of identifying where the Planning Commission has determined they want to promote or encourage the development of dwelling units, other than everywhere in all districts. Where do we want more housing, and at what density do we want that housing, isn't expressed, only a town-wide blanket approval. And particularly concerning for that is that there's no limit on the number of commercial accessory dwelling units. commercial accessory dwelling units, as the bylaws currently proposed. And then thinking big picture about in our town, we have districts that are set aside for intense, high-traffic, noisy activities like highway commercial and industrial activities. And I think the bylaw misses the mark and will put people in areas that we want to reserve for activities like, that make, that make a lot of noise. And the problem, the problem that creates is when you put people in an industrial zone, that, that seems to benefit that person who's doing it at that time, but then the next person who wants to do an industrial activity, you've restricted their, their potential to do it. And we've had lots of hearings here in town, particularly at the Development Review Board, where we have, the conflicts always, almost always arise when you have a noisy, dusty, smoky activity with trucks right next to someone's house. And so, so this, and let me just, in keeping with that, say, I'm in favor of this bylaw in, 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 in specific zones. And that's the Hamlet and the Village. I really think it's a great idea and I'm all for it. But thinking about, we want to have the highway commercial where someone can just roll right in, come in the Development Review Board, and we can give them a permit for a gas station or for a big hotel. And we don't have right next to them a bunch of people who live above a small, you know, existing building. So I would like to see the, the, the change, the change in the, at least the number of units in the highway commercial, and I would like to do away with it in the industrial district. Okay. And then thinking about one in, within the definition of the commercial accessory dwelling unit, it says, it says that the purpose is to provide flexibility for owners of commercial and industrial buildings to provide housing in town while ensuring safety and compliance with existing zoning standards. And what, what we, a couple of ways we do that are with certificate, certificates of occupancy, and the other is with site plan review. And the bylaw as written right now, there is no certificate of occupancy required. So we could put all those units above a commercial structure and we never, Ryan would never have an opportunity to check for compliance like he would. So I would put the certificate of occupancy back in there. And then another, one of the exemptions, exemption three in there, says that any property that happens to have an existing permit from the Development Review Board is exempt from site plan review. So any project that has, that's a commercial development that's already been permitted by us, just by virtue of having that, this section makes it exempt from review. And it's, I don't know, I mean, we want to make the development easy where we want development, but I feel like that exemption misses the mark because if we're going to put a bunch of people in an industrial area or in a highway commercial area, we shouldn't just allow that activity to be exempt from review. And, and then my last, the last comment is, if approved, I'd want there to be a standard five. That is adding to the list of standards that are already here, a standard five, making the commercial accessory dwelling unit clearly subordinate to the commercial industrial use. And I think this gets back to one of the questions you were asking before is, well, we, we want to have commercial space in these commercial zones, but what if it's not, you know, what if it's not rented or the, the commercial use becomes, well, there's a shingle hung up, there's one commercial little building, one office, and there's 14 apartments, right? That's, so, so I think that there should be a standard added for making the, the dwellings subordinate to the commercial use. And then I had, I had some suggestions just thinking about tonight because I'd like, you know, I'd, I'd like the select board to consider making progress on this and get the, get the commercial accessory dwelling units approved for the Village District and the Hamlet District, and then, and then make a couple modifications for other districts. And then I had, I had drafted up a couple suggested motions if you want to consider them. One would be if you were in favor of approving this tonight and you were, you were really gung ho and you wanted to make limited changes, I have one set of suggestions for you. And then if, if you think that you want to approve it tonight, but most of what I said has made sense, then I have a few, a few more for you to consider. So those were my comments.
Ryan, Ryan, either one of you want to respond to this?
I may need you to remind me of some of those points. So the first one about the, the bylaw doesn't specify where we're trying to focus housing. And so the, the purpose of the, or I guess the town plan is the document that does that, that does the visioning and decides where do we want to focus commercial and residential. And there's a future land use map that goes with the town plan, that's mandatory, and that's supposed to inform the zoning districts. So the, I think the place for calling out where we want to encourage that type of distinction between commercial and residential is, is kind of for the town plan and, and not so much for this bylaw because this is specific to where commercial uses exist or could exist. So wherever those commercial uses exist or could exist is where we want to allow for commercial owners to be able to utilize this. Let's see, the, okay, the, the next one was the industrial district. Is something specific about the industrial district?
I think the industrial district, I was just saying, that's where we want to be able to have noisy, busy trucks, noisy activity.
So to, I guess, the, that wasn't what I was thinking of. The, so to the, the number of units, so it is limited to some degree by the space of the building and what's allowed on a certain property. It's limited by wastewater and water capacity and all those different things. And so we had discussed a, a number, what, what would be a reasonable number? And it was impossible to really pin down what is the most appropriate number just because the, the sizes of land and the sizes of buildings and the uses, it's also variable and it felt very arbitrary to say you can only have one or five because it very well could be that someone comes in with a space and they could easily make six. And then we have this arbitrary bylaw with a number that was just, seemed like a good happy medium or something. So it, it's kind of limited by other factors, but it's also, we're, we're not trying to limit it to a number of dwellings, dwelling units. The, an owner can have that, that determination. And then the, oh, so the other thing about the certificate of occupancy is I really don't go into buildings most of the time. Zoning typically deals with the, the, the land and the site and where is access and where's the building located, things like that. The, the interior of these spaces, it's, I think it's reasonable to assume that they're going to be rented or available to the public. There's no oversight of the, of the interior of owner-occupied buildings. However, when it gets rented, then they are required to have a fire safety permit and it's inspected by the state fire marshal. And so they're the ones who are far more qualified than me to, to do the inspections of the internal space, make sure it has the proper egress and fire safe and, you know, smoke detectors and things like that. So I think that's, that's kind of maybe the reason that there's not a certificate of occupancy is because it, it gets reviewed by that body, the state fire marshals.
The exemption?
The exemption from?
The exemption from site plan review for existing-
Right, okay, yeah. So if, if a, a commercial business has gone through site plan review and they prepare a site plan that's been approved by the DRB or the town, and they want to open a commercial accessory dwelling unit or multiple, and there would be no proposed changes to the site, like they don't need to add parking or they don't need to really make any changes to the site, then the reason that there's no site plan review required is because there's nothing that's changing about that. So, so that's, that's the purpose of that. The, the site plan review is required for, except, commercial accessory dwelling units in the industrial district. So that's where we see that conflict and want a higher level of review on those. Was there anything else?
I think having a standard five where the commercial accessory dwelling unit was, was subordinate for commercial.
Right, okay. So I think the, the reason that, that, that there's no language requiring it to be subordinate is that if there's a commercial business and they want to open these apartments or accessory dwelling units, they could very well be more intensive than the commercial use. It depends on what the use is. And the intent is not to maintain the, that commercial business as the primary. It, it's the primary in the sense of that's the primary entrance, we want to preserve that space. But if, if there are 15 apartments above that, as long as that commercial use on the ground level is, is still ongoing, then, then that's okay. That's basically the, the planning commission's take on it.
If I, if I may add in something, just to let the chair of the planning commission here. One of the things that we really kind of went in depth on talking about was making sure that absolutely none of the commercial spaces existing goes away. Because once something that's commercial is transferred over to residential, it almost never goes back. So we really thought about that when we were putting all this language together.
And so this, the other thing is this isn't a, a method to get to a purely residential structure. This is inherently accessory to a commercial business and if, if, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
I'm curious if that's true, why we didn't, wouldn't add the language about being subordinate?
I think because we want to allow for a building that may be primarily apartment building as, as the use there. So there's still a commercial, I mean, at that point, it, it is a, the, the residential portion is commercial for the landowner. But we wanted to maintain that storefront or whatever the business is and allow for as many apartments as, as the landowner wants to create, even if that's the more intensive use. It, it's hard to measure what's more intensive. Is it the square footage or like the, the noise output? Or there, there's a lot of things that you could argue make something more intensive than, than the other. So it's, it's kind of subjective wording. I suppose we could come up with a way of evaluating it, but I don't think the, I don't think it was a primary goal to make sure that the commercial use is clearly the dominant use of the property.
I'll go back to the example I gave you of the Perkinsville store. The, if the, if the, if the entire, if the entire amount of the, the first level, entry level is the store and the, the top level is equal to that, that could all be housing. And again, I don't think they have a basement, but if they did, they could also turn the basement into it. Now you'd have twice as much housing space as you do commercial space, but you didn't change the commercial use. That's kind of what we were looking at at the planning commission. So, Mr. Fuller?
This geared to existing buildings or new construction? Because I'm having a big problem with listening to what you're saying, saying that commercial space, let's say, is 1,200 feet on the floor, but you can have 15 apartments up above it. I'm not sure that that fits the model that the town might be looking for. As opposed to the example that Mike just gave where we have a building that's not being used that well, you do want kind of a mixed use and it's in the village, it's not clearly in a commercial zone or industrial zone. And I really take Todd's point when he said, if I just use that other example that I gave about a commercial building with thousands of square feet and 15 apartments, which is what you said, that's a lot of people in 15 apartments that are being put in a zone that you might not really be intended. On the other hand, my question was, did you give more thought to the older buildings to make a little bit more use of them? I think that makes sense. Given the building cost, it's cheaper to retrofit and make apartments.
Yeah, so the bylaw itself is not specifically geared towards one or the other, but it, most of the discussion and, and I think the assumption is that a lot of it, or it would mostly be for existing commercial buildings.
Good.
That being said, it doesn't preclude someone from building a new commercial building and putting apartments above it.
Either Ryan or Brian. At the planning commission, we had a discussion about those like small rooms that are like, could you speak on that, Brian?
Just one more thing. The, the use has to conform with the town plan. That's another part of, especially the, the site plan review, when it goes to the DRB, is if, if it doesn't comply with the town plan, it's, it's, that's kind of a non-starter. So if someone was to propose 20 apartment building, apartment units in the industrial zone, they're going to evaluate whether or not that, whether or not they can do it in a way that it fits the town plan. Or if it defeats the purpose of that, then that's, that's one of the criteria they have to meet, so it could be denied for, for that purpose too.
That's just in the industrial zone?
Um, that's, that's where there is the specific language for the reviewing it that way. The bylaws generally might state, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't think the bylaws state specifically that an application needs to conform with the town plan. But I could be wrong about that.
Brian?
So you had mentioned the size of these units. And one of the concerns that I brought up in this discussion was I was very concerned about that we didn't have the number of units or the size of the units limited because I was worried that someone could open up a hostel. And so I think specifically it says inside, in the, in the new definitions, that it must have a kitchen, a bathroom, and a living area. So we don't end up with just a place to sleep and a common kitchen. And that was one of my main concerns, like Mr. Fuller expressed, that someone could come in there, and the store is a great example. You could put 25 bedrooms up there and have a common community kitchen. And I was very worried about that. So that's why part of the definition says it must be a fully functioning unit.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I think I just have one more question. And Ryan?
Back up to the microphone. Thank you.
Just, just to follow up on something Rika had mentioned before about what we allow in the highway commercial district and in the industrial district and what we don't. And our bylaws right now do not allow multifamily units in either of those districts. So that, just, just so we're clear, we're going to be creating apartments where we say you can't have apartments, or somebody, or somebody could. So it is, is potentially something that you want to consider.
Is that what it actually says in the bylaw?
Use is not, use is not allowed.
Use is not permitted.
Permitted, yeah.
Residential multifamily, residential single-family, residential two-family.
And are they conditional?
It just, no, just says they're not permitted. They're not conditional.
Okay.
So the-
But the C, the, the CA cadu is, is conditional.
Right. So I think the reason that those uses are not allowed in the highway commercial district or in the industrial district is for the, the reason that we don't want that commercial land to be converted permanently to residential, like Joe was talking about. So they need to have that commercial component to it. So it's not that- So it's not that, I guess, while currently we don't allow for apartments there, it's, I think it's because we don't want the conversion of the land away from commercial. So this allows for residential uses, but maintains that commercial use of the property. So that, in that case, they wouldn't be able to come back and say, I would like a new applica- or a new permit for multifamily, because they can't do that in that district. So if they want...
But they're essentially creating a, they have the ability to create a multifamily unit.
Right. So they can provide...
Of an industrial facility.
Right. So the housing would be there, but they wouldn't convert the property to a residential.
A, a situation like this could potentially involve employees of the company as well. I mean, you don't really know who is necessarily going to be the person living there. It, it does have the potential that, that it could be housing for employees. Grace?
I, I think these multifamily dwellings are not allowed, I'm Grace Knight. In any district, it's not allowed in rural residential three to five or conservation 10. I mean, the whole point of the accessory dwelling unit is to allow for some flexibility. So you can say multifamily units aren't allowed in highway resident, highway commercial or industrial, but they're certainly not allowed in places where residential accessory dwelling units are allowed. Do you see what I'm saying?
Not certain.
Oh, never mind.
No, no, explain.
Okay. The point made was that you can't have an apartment building in highway commercial or industrial. You also cannot have an apartment building in rural residential three to five or in conservation 10. Of course you can't have an apartment building in those places. It would violate the town plan. It would violate the purpose of having those zones. But you can have a residential accessory dwelling unit in those areas of town to provide flexibility. That's the whole point of allowing accessory dwelling units. So in my mind, saying that because we can't have an apartment building, we therefore can't have an accessory dwelling unit, doesn't really follow.
I guess my thinking was 10 accessory, accessory units, not, not one, right?
Yes, yes. So, yeah, which, which ties in, which ties in well with Todd's points, yes.
Right. That's, that's, that's what's going, my, like...
Absolutely.
Is, but, which is different than one, right? Which I, 100%, this makes a lot of sense. The Perkinsville store makes tons of sense to me, right? Like that, that's logical, makes sense. It's, it's the, the, I don't, I mean, it seems, it implies you put a lot of, in, in the industrial...
Well, the intent of this is not to add a structure. This is to add a, a use within a structure. Again, so you're, you're not, you're, again, you're going to be limited by that structure. Whether you're, I, I don't think, I can't really think of a place where you're going to put 10 units in anything that's currently existing. I'm just off the top of my head.
No, but I do think bylaws, right? You're trying to think into the future, right? And like, all, all of this is built around thinking into the future of, that, that's my understanding of why we do this work, right? It's thinking, thinking down the road. I mean, Ian, I'm trying to understand...
That's the planning commission's.
I, I, right, but we're, we're sitting here looking at the bylaw, right? Like, and, you know, I've just, I think of the storage units in a Scutney, I mean, sorry, in Downers, right? Does that mean you can then put apartments above them, right? You'd have to bring them up to go to the septic and all that. But always, right? You could then add a couple stories above them and have many units, right, on stuff that has a big footprint. That's not the intent, but it is actually...
I'm not sure it's feasible.
I, I, I'm, I'm throwing out, like, a building that has a big footprint, that has some opportunity, right? But essentially, you could do that if you got it up to, right?
Well, let's take it to Todd's point of, of turning it into a motel. You take all of those units that exist there, Mr. Spur's, storage units, and turn each one of those into a, but now you're on the first floor, it's not allowed. You can't do it.
You couldn't turn it into a motel?
No. Those are all first-floor units, correct?
So it's interesting you say that. Because I drove by Downers the other day, and I thought, gee, here's a great example for what we're talking about.
Chris, please.
So it's a, you know, a commercial use on the first floor, and then on the second floor, given the height restrictions of the zone, which I think is 35 feet, if I remember correctly, theoretically, you're correct, you could add, so what are those storage units, 12, 14 feet? And then another story be 13 to 15 feet? So you could add another layer up there, but then you also have to satisfy all the other requirements, the septic, stormwater, and all those other things. And whether it's feasible or not, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's an interesting, you know, when you think about the ramifications of this, and when I, when we're in the planning commission, I sometimes think about what we're trying to do, and, you know, you can't predict all the ramifications of what we're, we're doing. You try to think of it, and then that's why these forums are always so great, because other people look at this with fresh eyes, instead of us, week after week, looking at it, too, so.
From a vacuum, in many cases.
Yeah, and a vacuum.
What was I gonna, I was gonna say something about the, that site. The, the bylaw that allowed those storage units is a very detailed, structured bylaw as well, which I, I don't think you'd be able to come outside of that. You'd have to look at that, Ryan.
That I don't know. But I mean, it's a, it's a, it can say, in the world of possibilities, sure.
Now, if that were to, it's, let's say something like that happened, that somebody came and made a proposal to try to do something like that, that would be another instance where the interim bylaw to stop a problem before it gets out of hand would be, could be used. And it was part of the intent of the, the interim bylaw is, 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 because of what Brian just said, it's nearly impossible for the planning commission to predict or, or foresee every possible scenario, and, and, and you guys have brought up some really good ones. But if, if something like that all of a sudden pops up, and that's not what you want, it's not what your town plan calls for, then, then the interim bylaw can be used very quickly to stop something like that.
Educate me about the interim bylaw?
No. Read it, read up on the interim bylaw. It's a statutory language that, that, we, we already adopted one, just recently. We adopted an interim bylaw.
There's nothing in here, because I didn't read it.
No, no, no. Interim bylaw is a totally separate bylaw, or statute, actually, statutory law, language. We used it for the...
Childcare?
Yeah, childcare facility. That was an interim bylaw.
Got it.
It's a good question, but I just didn't want to get tied up in that.
No, no, no. I thought it was, that I'd missed something, so, thanks.
Any, any other, Jason Rasmussen?
Hi, my name is Jason Rasmussen, and I'm going to speak as a resident and as an alternate to the DRB, not my other, not my other hat. So, you know, I, I think my main question is, or concern would be a lack of guidance for the development review board. And I'm going to just say Todd's points. I think that, that speaks to, to my concern. I think it's hard to understand where this line gets drawn. Practically speaking, wastewater permitting is probably going to limit those 15 or whatever units that we're talking about, but I think there needs to be some clear guidance there. I'm thinking of a number of buildings in Perkinsville, in a Scutney, and, you know, this helps tremendously, I think, compared to what the process, the very cumbersome process is now, to add units, residential units in some of those larger buildings. But I think there's an easier way to do it. I think you can have, you know, instead of going through this, you could allow multiple principal uses on a lot in the village district, and you sort of achieve the same result. So I'm going to keep it short and sweet. I think this is an improvement in the village district. I do think there's a better way to do it, but I'm really, at the end of the day, mostly concerned with the lack of clear guidance for the, the DRB. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Can I just ask for some examples of how... I just want to give an opportunity to understand how, how it could be worded, what kind of guidance would be helpful to the DRB. How, you said to, to draw the line between something.
I want to prolong the discussion. I was trying to say, what Todd said. You know, at some point, you know, what's, what's accessory and what's not? Is a 14-unit, 14 apartments behind a bookstore accessory? I, I don't think so. And so, you know, is there, are two accessory dwelling units enough? Is it 20? You know, I don't know. And at, at some point, the DRB is going to be asked to make that decision. We may be lucky that wastewater permitting is going to, you know, restrict those numbers for us, but, you know, what's, you know, what's, what's accessory? And at the end of the day, what do we want? We want more housing. And, and this is a nice idea. I think we might want to scale this back and think about other ideas. We might want to allow for apartments in other places. We might want to allow for mixed-use buildings in other places. That's just one example. Yeah, you know, I, I guess I, I just worry about getting those sorts of difficult questions, where there's a small commercial building, and how, how big can you go? And the other part of it is, you know, we're, these rules are allowing development to get permitted that's going to last 50 years, 100 years, stuff changes. Who knows what the future of commercial is? And, you know, all of a sudden, you're left with a 14-unit accessory dwelling units behind a vacant store that's never going to reopen. And what, and, so, again, I, I really applaud the effort, but I want to just throw that out there.
I keep, I keep hearing numbers like 14, and 10, and 18, and, and stuff like that. And that, that is not something I recall from our discussions, other than what Brian had pointed out with having a hostel, which we clearly ruled out. You can't do that. They have to be complete living units. And, Brian, isn't there a statute on the minimum size of something like that, like 400 square feet, or is that just apply to the accessory?
Brian had brought up some, some code booklet that talked about what is considered the minimum living space size.
It was, it was a guideline. It wasn't a standard. It was a suggested 900 or 1,200 square feet, depending on which version of that document you read, is sort of a standard for enough apartments. As you may remember, right off the top of my head, I don't...
But a tiny house is usually more on the order of 400 square feet.
Or less.
Or less.
And I think that does get back to sort of what I was saying, the lack of guidance for the DRB. So I'll pick a number, two. No more than two, you know, commercial accessory dwelling units, or they can't be any bigger than 900 square feet each, or something. You know, some levels, some limits would be helpful for me as an alternate DRB member.
What is the board's, thank you, Jason?
I don't know if you can see it from there.
Oh, I'm sorry, DeForest, go ahead. I, I didn't see your hand behind you.
Leaving a trail here. I, I just want to reiterate what I said, that I still think this is a great idea. There might be some fine tuning needed, but again, it says existing businesses. I thought I heard you say it had to be within an existing footprint. So I can't think of any building, existing building, in a Scutney, in Perkinsville, anywhere in Weathersfield, in, in these zones, that would enable 15 units. I just don't see that happening. And even the general store building in Perkinsville is severely limited because of septic situation. They barely have enough for that building being half-empty. So with all respect, Jason, I, I agree with Jason's ideas that there should be some more refining to the, the land use laws that will encourage more housing, but this is a great first step. This provides an added revenue stream for our existing businesses, which certainly they, they would welcome. It doesn't consume more developable land, yet it provides more housing, and we desperately need housing. We need 25,000 new units in the next five years in the state of Vermont to keep up with the housing demand. So all of those are good ideas, and could it be maybe a little more detail? I, I trust the planning commission. I think they put a huge amount of effort into this, and they've thought through as many of those details as is humanly possible, when you're thinking theoretically. Some point, you got to let the thing go and see what happens. Sometimes you find there's some flaws, and then you fix them. But we desperately need housing. Our businesses could certainly stand the, the positive impact that this would have for them, and it's a great way to get started. So I really hope you'll, you'll consider adopting it. Thank you.
Thank you, DeForest. So where's the board at, at this point in time? Are you satisfied with this? Do you want to make some recommendations for changes? What do you want to do?
Mike, what's the urgency for making a decision today? Is there a reason why we, I'm, right, this is a lot to process. I'm curious what the urgency of making a decision today versus...
Well, it's not so much urgency, Nate. We certainly could continue the hearing. However, changing the language, we, I believe, we're limited on what we can do. Ryan, you want to explain some of that?
So if anything of, of, I don't know what the word is...
Substantial.
Yeah, substantial. If there's substantial changes, then it needs to go back to the planning commission. They need to re-warn a hearing, and it's basically starting, starting fresh with the, with the approval process. Small, minor changes, typos, small things like that can be, can be made at any point. Yeah.
So Ryan, would you consider putting limits to the number of units as a substantial change? Because I remember right when we had this conversation with the aircraft, right?
Yeah.
Debate was, what was substantial or not substantial?
I'd have to think more about that, whether that, that would be considered substantial. The, so the other thing I'll just bring up is, Jason can, or Todd, or anyone can feel free to add on to it, but it seemed like the, the clarification that the board wanted was a definition for accessory. And then there was also a point about maybe we should change it and add a, a limit on the number of units. So those are, those are two different things. And so we can easily, if it was adopted, we could easily, you know, address that concern by adopting a new definition for accessory. But I think by putting a limit on the, the number of units allowed, I, I, my feeling is it is substantial, because, because it was, the intention was to not provide a, a specific number that way.
And, and I'll reiterate that if we started to head into a problem there, we could come back and address that with an interim bylaw that would curb that before it gets out of hand. You, perhaps you end up with, with a permit, or, or a couple of permits that, that, that get through, but you recognize the problem and you fix it, and you, and interim is, is, it only comes here. The planning commission sends it to us with, you know, and says, hey, you need to fix this, and you do it, and you, and you do it quickly, and it's in place. So you, we could curb that, if necessary.
Another point of clarification that we could potentially do is a, a criteria, set a criteria or a, a process for the DRB to evaluate whether or not it's conforming with the town plan, because basically they're just told it needs to. Any conditional uses need to, are evaluated in that way. But we could be more specific about how we want the board to evaluate the number of units that are proposed, and, and the site, and the overall town plan.
I think that would help me greatly, if that was...
So is, is that because the concern is having residential uses outside of where we want them?
Uh, yes, and, and I do understand, like, if I have a sawmill, having an apartment above me, like, I, I understand that. But yes.
So is the conflict between residential and commercial?
Well, it's the end purpose, I guess. I mean, I keep hearing this, like, hey, the, you know, I think, I don't know who said it, but like, right, the business... but like, right, the business goes out, all of a sudden, you have whatever number, I don't know. Maybe it's four, like, that it actually, you know, turns it in actually to a apartment complex, right? With, with the, you know, the history of having a business.
Okay. Brian?
So to address that, I too thought about that, that we create this and that we have a number of businesses, let's say, in the next five years. The businesses all go out. And then I think we're faced with a situation where the planning commission is going to have to look at this and say, okay, we have a situation in town where we have five empty commercial buildings. What are we going to do, guys, with that? And I, it, the crystal ball is the hardest part of this job. And it's difficult on our end and it's difficult on your end. And then the DRB is the recipient of anything we decide here tonight. And, you know, they're asking for some guide rails and some guidance. And I think that, that's something that the planning commission is starting to do. And then I'm encouraging the planning commission to do and to work more closely with the DRB on these issues as we move forward in establishing these things. But your point about what do we do if we end up with a 10 apartments, four apartments, whatever the number is, and the business is empty for five years? And the owner shows up here and says, hey, guys, select board, what am I going to do with this building? I, I can't rent it to anybody. I want to make it an apartment. It's not permitted. Well, then I think at that time, it should go back to the planning commission and have a discussion about what do we do with that issue.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just, so that, that's what I'm hesitant on, on being like, yeah, let's accept that. Because I can foresee, right, that of then creating this, like, once you have people there, right? Like, it's just like when we're talking about having, you know, pre-existing residents in industrial areas. Then we start making lots of exemptions because they're already there. Just like using wastewater as a limit often just puts pressure on wastewater systems, right? To think about bringing wastewater into places, think about other ways of doing it. Because we don't often then say, no, people have to go, right? That's not something we do, right, like generally? That's what I'm trying to think.
Septic is not the only limiting factor, though. Structure size is also a limiting factor.
Correct. It's just the one I've heard over and over.
Brandon, you got anything? You're doing a lot of writing over there.
I'm just, I'm just taking some notes. But I mean, like, if you go into larger cities, like I, I worked in the city of Fall River. And what you've seen, like, in the downtown area is a lot of businesses that were vacant, like empty storefronts and so forth, and those buildings become run down. If there were residential units above those businesses, those rents would be able to carry the cost of the building from a business perspective so that the buildings don't become rundown. I think there's some benefit in that.
Yeah, maybe. I mean, it hasn't played out in Springfield, right?
I think there's, there are residential units in downtown now.
Right, the Housing Authority took them over and is revitalizing it.
I don't think we should put much faith in soliciting commercial. We have, we have it zoned here. But just look, look at the last 50 years. The Escutney store is out of business. The Perkinsville store is out of business. You know, the whole thing has evolved into home delivery and, and large shopping. I don't think that it's going to turn around. I think the horses have left the station. So the fact is that apartments are needed or some living space. And $425 a square foot in building, not going to, not going to build new houses, really. Which is why I asked, I appreciate what Brian said when he said that there was at least some sort of a minimum space allowed to quote "live" unquote. So I don't, I don't know the answer. But I wouldn't put stock in completely being able to keep commercial space.
Yes, Brian?
Not to prolong this, but I think for me, part of the reason why I became interested in this topic is because of what Forrest has started to talk about, a housing shortage. And we desperately need housing. We need housing here. We need housing in the surrounding community. This is not a perfect solution we're doing here tonight. This is the first step. And I'll bet in three or five years, we may amend this and make some other changes, depending on what's going to happen. So I just think it's a good first step. I'm sure there's going to be some bumps in the road as we go through the first application with this or, or two or three, and we may be back here sooner than, than we think. But.
I'm going to add something to that. The planning commission is now legislative only. We no longer do the subdivision part of, of our job. It's all at the DRB now. That's allowing us to focus on zoning, town plan, subdivision regulations. And that means that probably going to be seeing more of this stuff coming forward all the time. The board, I think, has made some pretty good recommendations that, that were not, that did not escape our conversations. They just didn't make it to the, to the, into the legislation. And so when we go back, if, if this were to be forwarded tonight, passed tonight, the planning commission has your instructions and, and can take this up. I, I don't think there's an application in process or even, I do know of one that, that triggered this, and this is twin line equipment. But, but they're not in the middle of any process. It's the only one I'm aware of that's even asked. So it's not like there's this big rush from the public to put in a bunch of apartments wherever. So this, the changes could be done without costing the town the fees for rewarning this hearing, rewarning a hearing over at the planning commission. We don't make a whole bunch of money over there, so there's no cost there. But the point is that the, the suggestions that you guys have made can be incorporated and brought back with the next round of bylaws or the next bylaw that comes. We can include them together and upgrade the language to include your suggestions. That's very possible without making much of a mess of the whole thing.
Right, or, or that we could not, you know, or another draft could be brought back.
If you do another draft, this hearing ends. Planning commission has to do their work. They have to rewarn a hearing. Then we have to rewarn a hearing. And that all costs money.
And, and as a planning commission member, I'm not, I'm willing to do that if that's the pleasure of the board, if to what you want. And certainly would welcome the comments from the DRB. And, and I've been anxious to get them more involved in, in what we're doing, too, to get the feedback so we have a better line of communication. Because they're the recipient of any of the decisions we make tonight. And certainly, I agree with Todd. And Jason, we need, we need some guide rails on many of the things that we have. And there's a lot of work to be done coming in the future, too, to, to help improve these things.
And I've always wanted to be more standardized. In other words, having standard, standards in place that say, it's this, it's this, it's this. This is how you go about doing it. This is how you do, to provide those guide rails, guidelines for the DRB zoning board.
So I'm, I'm willing to do it either way. If you, if you folks think that we need to take another crack at this, hey, you know, I'm all for it, happy to do the work, so.
I mean, that would make me more comfortable.
What would? What would?
He wants to go back to the planning commission.
Okay, here's my question. Is the, Ryan, is, is there, do you consider what Todd, and I'll say Jason, too, because he said what Todd said? Is, do you consider what they, because they're implementing the words that you put to the applicants. Do you consider what they want to do as some sort of a minor change? Or would you consider what they want to do a major change?
Yeah, so I wanted to get clarification as to what they need for, for guidance. And so the definition for accessory, I don't think would be substantial. We, we can do that, I think, without having to rewarn the hearing. If we wanted to put a limit on the number of units, I think that would be substantial. So the, and those were the only two changes we were considering. Although it would be good before we end tonight to get a list of what everyone wants to see. Or, or maybe more from the board, because the DRB can come to those planning commission. And they did in, at the other ones. And then the, the process, it doesn't cost that much money or take that much time. But realistically, my days are filled two weeks ahead of, ahead of time. And realistically, getting it before the planning commission would probably be, fastest possible would be the, the second meeting in February. More likely, it'd be the first or second in March. And then it wouldn't come back here until April, probably. And they're also focused on the, on the town plan. That's already probably going to be late at this point. So it wouldn't be a high priority.
But what I'm hearing is it's not, we don't have anything that is urgent at the moment.
Like, we don't have any applications in, yeah. And then what Mike brought up about twin line, they brought up three years ago. So they might say it's urgent, but they, they also haven't put in an application, probably because they know that it wasn't allowed, so.
I have a quick question.
If you do that fact, I'd just like to say, I mean, they're working on this for two and a half years, and it took this long to get here. So if there are things that need to be changed on it, we're more than willing to work on that. But we can always make amendments to it and change it as things go along, which would keep the whole process moving forward, which is really what we're trying to do.
I have a quick question.
Yes, Brandon?
Do you have a similar, is the public hearing at the planning commission the same type of public hearing as we're having now?
Yeah, warrant 15 days in advance.
Okay. What kind of feedback did you get from that meeting and what kind of attendance did you get?
Todd Hindinger was at, I think, at least two meetings. I don't know if it was the hearing that it was adopted at. But so he, he came in with, with feedback before the final draft was put together. So those, and he had a list of changes that were all reviewed. I don't, I can't, I can't really recall. But I don't think that anyone showed up for the, the hearing with substantial comments. I think Beth Huntens a lot of times online and shares some stuff. But I don't think there wasn't dramatic opposition or, or changes proposed that the board hasn't considered.
Dave, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just want to follow up what Brian said earlier. So I, I share the thought of whatever the limits are about apartments or living space. But did, did you clarify that by saying there was some, what of a square footage minimum? Or some sort of quantification of what that could be or could not be?
So, no. So what I was saying before was about a square footage, like a percentage of that primary floor, which was something that they were discussing at some point and then ended up striking, saying basically, that, that business floor needs to stay commercial. It got too fussy to try and figure out how to allow a certain amount of that and where in the building and stuff like that. So that was, yeah, so there's, so there's not, other than there's a limit on how tall a building can be. So the number of floors is going to be limited. They're limited on the lot as to where the building can go. So it can't be expanded in every direction. And it can't be, the building can't be expanded for this purpose either.
And it, and it also can't be hostile style, Dave, which is like rooms with a common kitchen and a common living space. In other words, 15 bedrooms with one living room kitchen.
I'm just trying to move this forward to not seem to satisfy the number, but still keep it so that the work is done and moves forward. You know what I mean? I, I just, I just remember what you just said, where it was like 400 or 600 square feet or whatever it was per, but you didn't quantify that, right? Living apartment.
We, we quantified it in the fact that it has to be a complete unit. Each, each unit has to be like a bedroom, a kitchen, living space, bathroom. It has to all be one complete unit.
That helps.
Mike?
Yes?
It seems like it's already limiting by other, other factors. I don't see why we would limit it further if we're looking to develop housing.
Yeah, so the, 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 the lack of a cap on the number of units was probably the most, the, the most important talking point that, that lasted a long time. And we went back and forth on a lot of different things. And it's just, it's, it's too arbitrary to say five units is the max. And then someone comes in with an ideal situation for six, and we have this arbitrary max. And then do we go back and, and change the bylaw to allow for the six? Or do we just say, too bad? A lot of times, the, the, the extra unit is what changes it from making it not profitable to a profitable business venture. I mean, a lot of these are owned by people who aren't going to live there. And they're being rented either maybe for their employees or more likely to rent out as commercial spa, rental, you know, space.
Brandon?
DeForest, did you say 25,000 houses a year?
No, over the next five years.
Over the next five years. Okay.
So the, another thing that we're discussing at the town plan, on the town plan project, is the state has mandated that we need to work with the regional commission to identify the number of housing units that are needed. And one of the, the points that we're proposing in the new town plan is that Weathersfield can address some of these housing shortages with accessory dwelling units. We mentioned the commercial accessory dwelling unit and PUDs. That's the other thing that we're looking at and discussing. So I think accessory dwelling units in any fashion are, are one of the most straightforward and it's kind of the low-hanging fruit of, of getting more housing.
DeForest?
If I'm not mistaken, once you put a dwelling unit in a commercial building, it's subject to the state building code. And the state building code is going to dictate an awful lot about the size and configuration of your dwelling.
Just to reiterate that, the, anything that's rented to the public needs to get a state fire safety permit from the state fire marshals, which is when they'll review egress and smoke detectors and all those different aspects. Which is, I think I brought it up under, to the point of why we don't have a certificate of occupancy. And all of the, I think the concern with rental apartments is interior. And that's not only not my background, but I don't have the jurisdiction to, to tell them that they need to put in a smoke detector. That's, that is the state fire marshal's jurisdiction.
Okay.
Is there any risk that units like this would become, you know, sort of short-term rentals for the ski crowd or, you know, that somebody takes it? I, I just am thinking about short-term rentals being.
BRB?
And.
Like a BRB?
Yeah, that kind of thing.
Yeah, it's, it's not addressed in, in this bylaw.
No, but is it, is there a potential for?
I think there, there could be, especially if you're speaking arbitrarily, just sort of generically about any town. There are definitely towns where short-term rentals are a problem. And then there are lots of towns where short-term rentals have been very, you know, positive for the town. In Weathersfield, it hasn't really shown itself. I think there are short-term rentals, but it's not, it's not to the, not to the level where, where, you know.
Okay. Is everybody satisfied with the information they've received so far tonight? With what we have at this point? All right. So we're either going to close the hearing and vote on it or we're going to continue the hearing. I, I'm not sure what the purpose of that would be because the, the one change that's been requested to change the number of units, we couldn't come back and do without rewarning anyway. Because it has to go back to the planning commission. Correct, Ryan? We'd have to close the hearing anyway and to send it back to the planning commission?
Yeah.
Okay. So we either close the hearing, send it back to the planning commission, or we close the hearing and we vote on the bylaw. Either, either way. We have, have, we'll have to have a motion to either send it back to the planning commission or to approve the bylaw. So are you ready for me to close the hearing? Or do you have any further questions? Any, anything else you want to know at this time?
I move we close the hearing.
You don't do that. I just declare it. It's okay.
Oh, you just, oh, okay.
Yeah, I just declare it. So, okay, if, Dave, Kelly, everybody okay? I'll close the hearing? Okay, I'll declare the hearing closed. It is 8:03. Now, we can have a motion. And that motion is either to send it back to the planning commission or to approve the bylaw as submitted at this time. I would, I would entertain that if, if you want to approve the bylaw, that you could include in the motion that you request the planning commission to look at this as soon as possible and send it up with the next bylaw with that, with that correction on the. I, I don't know if that would be appropriate, though, to be honest with you. Ryan, what do you think on that?
Yeah, I also think it probably shouldn't be part of that motion.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Just keep the motions straightforward. Either send it back to the Planning Commission or approve the bylaw as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
I guess I'd make a motion to send it back to the Planning Commission to review some of the feedback that we heard.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Hearing no second, that motion fails for lack of a second. Do we have a, the alternative motion is to approve the bylaw as it, as it is written? Do I hear that motion?
I'll, I'll do that motion for discussion. So I'll put that motion on the floor.
And do I hear a second? I will second that motion. We are in discussion of the motion. The motion is to approve the bylaw as submitted from the Planning Commission. Discussion. Dave, you made the motion. You have the floor.
So was there any other thing other than number of units from the DRB? Because they were the most vocal about implementing, whatever the language was in there, that would be viewed as a minor change that would forward the motion to go forward positively? That's my question.
Regarding, I think regarding the accessory definition, that could be done. But changing the number or adding a number for, of units would be considered substantial. Who are you pointing to? Todd?
Point to Todd, and let him answer that.
Oh. At the, at the, at the... People online can't hear you if you, if you stay back there.
We could always pass around a microphone in the future, too.
Yeah. I, I had, at, at, at the, when I, my initial comments had, had a few things, had a few things. The big pic, big picture items were, do we want to do this in the industrial and highway commercial district? That is the big thing that needs to be tackled, because I think, I think we, I think we don't. Okay? That, that was one. The other was the number of units. That is, do, anywhere we do this, do we want to cap the number of units? And I hadn't got to my suggestions yet, but we want to go very high in the village district, where we want, where we already allow multifamily dwelling units. So going to the, let's see. And then the, and then I was getting to the regulatory, the purpose of this, where we, we wanted to ensure the safety and compliance with the existing zoning standards. That is, I wanted to have conditional use approval put on there and site plan review. So that we do conditional use approval. Right now, that is not included for the highway commercial district, which I think it should be. And then I wanted to remove, I want, I suggested that we remove the exemption for, for existing permits. So right now, thinking, just going back to the, where we had the storage unit example, that, that storage unit complex has an existing permit. So with that exemption there, they could do all the additions of these dwelling units to that property. And that would be exempt from review by the Development Review Board. And then the last thing I had suggested was that we include language tackling the issue of making the commercial accessory dwelling units subordinate to the commercial property. Or including some way of, of proportioning the use. Those were the, those were the things that I had identified. And so I'll give you an example. When I started off my comments, I said I did have some, just to clarify, some ideas for a motion that you could consider. And this, it's, it's, it's too late to do that, but it'll help you understand what I'm thinking. So if we were going to, if you were going to make a motion and we could go back, we would limit the number of commercial accessory dwelling units to six in the village district, three in the highway commercial, two in the industrial, as, as an example. Strike item three from their review process as it's written, so that we require site plan review for all commercial accessory dwelling units. Add certificate of occupancy requirements. Add conditional use to the highway commercial district. Strike the language encouraging the commercial accessory dwelling units in the industrial district, because that just, or sorry, in the highway commercial district, because I don't think we want to encourage that. And then add the standard five for the use being subordinate.
Excuse me, I'd like to interject here. The hearing has been closed. Are we now in discussion with the select board members?
Yes, we are in discussion. It, it does not necessarily have to be just with the select board members. But I, I will say, Todd, that all of those suggestions would not be allowable under state statute. We can't make substantial changes like that to the bylaw. It would, you would have to take those back to the Planning Commission and resubmit the bylaw. It's statute.
I was just answering Dave's question of, was there something more than the number of units that we had talked about? And those were...
And that's, and that's why I allowed you to do that. But we, we could not make that in a motion. You added that at the beginning. You said, you know, a suggestion for a motion. No, you can't do that. You can't add all of those changes. It's, it's way beyond substantial. It's like, you ought to be on the Planning Commission.
I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other comments? All right. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the bylaw as submitted by the Planning Commission. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? You need to sit. Nay.
You need to sit?
And any abstentions?
I think from right now, I will abstain.
The motion fails? Dave, you can do whatever you want.
Yeah, exactly. What else is new? Well, I made the motion trying to get by, but I'm just thinking what Todd just said. I mean, he's chair of the DIB and asked for significant change. I'm a little, I don't know, I don't know where I'm at. I just, hearing that, I'm a no.
As I stated, Dave, at this point, it really doesn't matter. Because you have two abstentions, you have one yea and one nay. So it, it, the, the motion has failed regardless. So with that, the motion has failed. It does go back to the Planning Commission regardless to include these changes. And I'm, I'm, I'm going to make a statement that some people might not like it. And, but I'm going to make it. And this is statutory, so I'm just, it's not off the top of my head. But when the Planning Commission or the Select Board warn a hearing, there, there is a statement in the warning for the hearing that says you must participate in order to proceed in any further proceedings regarding this issue. So anybody not showing up at the Planning Commission will not be recognized at the next Select Board hearing on this topic if you did not participate at the Planning Commission. I want to make sure, because we, at the Planning Commission, we don't have to stop the hearing. We can, and re-warn everything. We can, we can take the comments and continue the hearing and, and finish the process before it gets here and not have to go through this backwards, long-ending thing. So I'm going to hold us to that in the future. If you do not participate at the Planning Commission, you will not be recognized coming forward. That's just how I'm going to handle it. The next chair may not. Anyway, so.
Is that the same for like board members, though, who are the judges? I mean, we're kind of like...
No, we're the judges.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. It's, you know, it, no, no, it's, no, you don't, you don't have to participate, no. You're, you're not, probably not supposed to, I don't think.
You're making it sound like we have to do it.
No, 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 not you guys. No, no, this is, this is, you know, anybody else that wants to participate in the process. And anybody can, and anybody can and is welcome to participate in the process. And I'm not trying to spank anybody, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to pull the process together. Anyway, okay. So the hearing, that, that hearing's over. It's back to the Planning Commission with that. And next on the agenda. Naming of waterways discussion. Who's got that? Good night, Gail.
That was the discussion that you could hear.
Okay. I like to wait until things get settled down. Good night. Ryan, go.
Okay. So the last time I was here, so I'm representing the Conservation Commission on this subject. The last time I was here might have been summertime. And basically, I explained that the Conservation Commission's worked on this project that originated with a request from the state to apply names to some of the waterways that they have on their system that are unnamed. Or as well as to clarify names for streams that have multiple names. So there's a few streams that have a name in a certain section of it, and then it changes when it crosses the road or something like that. So they wanted clarity on, on those things for their purposes. And Jeff Pelton was, was the chair, I think he was the chair at the time of the Conservation Commission when this started, and did the lion's share of the work and basically identified streams by watershed size. And I don't remember the acreage of those watershed sizes. But any of those streams that didn't have a name or had multiple names were researched. And so he went in and, and found what has been locally used as a name, whether there's been indigenous names in the past. And, and what was provided was basically a recommendation for what the Conservation Commission thinks that the name should be. And so the, this, they had completed the, the project, the, the report and everything, maybe two years ago or a year and a half or so. And we got feedback that it should, we wanted more, or the Select Board wanted more input from, from residents. And so they asked, have they, has everyone heard about it? And so the Conservation Commission sent a letter to all the registered voters in town, registered voters or landowners, whatever the list was, with a, with a memo explaining the project and asking for feedback. And so we probably heard back from 10 or so people, all with positive feedback. The most common question was, I have a stream on my property, but what's its name going to be? So it, it seemed pretty positive. And the last time I came here was to basically get input from the board as to what are the concerns. And so I've since reached out to the State Department of Agriculture and the Farm Service Agency to get their input to clarify some of the questions that, that were brought up. And so I think the primary question was about the regulatory aspects of agriculture surrounding the streams. And at our local level, municipal zoning, there, there are protected streams, and there's a definition for that and a way of measuring it. And this, that, it doesn't apply to, to the naming situation. Those streams are regulated by zoning based on the width of the stream channel. And the state regulates their streams. I guess I don't know how the, the determination's made, but they have a list of blue line streams is what they call them. And those are what the state has regular authority, authority over. So I reached out to them with, with questions of, with, my question is to address the Select Board's concerns. Does this naming process have any impact on the regulations? In other words, by naming these waterways, will there be new rules or increased scrutiny over the water quality on, on those systems, on those streams? And so from both departments, the answer was, was no. And there's more feedback from, I suppose this person's with the Agriculture, Agency of Agriculture, Food and Markets, basically explaining how the required agricultural practices apply, which are basically the state's regulatory document that informs farmers how, how these things are regulated. And I think the, the purpose of those regu, of the required agricultural practices are primarily for water quality. So I'll, I'll leave it there, but that, that was basically the, the feedback we got from the board was, will the changing of the name trigger any kind of new oversight or change the regulator, it changes regulations or anything like that? And so the feedback from both those agencies were that it does not. So I guess where, where that leaves it is there's a, a report and a proposal for changing these stream names. And the process would be upon the Select Board's approval, not necessarily a requirement, but the, the, the process is, this report goes to the Board of Libraries. And then they have their review process. And they, they want to see that it's, it's supported by the town. So that's where it sits. If, if the board approves of it, then we'll send it along to, to them for their processing.
Any questions? Kelly?
Does this consist of all the streams and stuff that are in this town? Or is this just the certain?
It's, it's only big enough ones to, I, I want to say it's 500 acres. It's in, it's in the report, which I didn't bring a copy of. But there was a, a metric used to measure what streams are significant enough. I think it ended up being like 20 streams, maybe. So no, it doesn't include all of them.
Anybody else? Dave?
Yes, I have a lot. Ryan, with all due respect, you're wrong. I have been in contact with the State Agriculture. And any alleged body of water does have significant restrictions the second that it goes up and, and the name is attached to it. So when you, it depends how you ask the question to someone.
Okay.
So if something never has a name, and all of a sudden a name appears, that's when the regulation takes place, including what you mentioned about now they're not accepted agricultural practices, they're required, they're wrapped. I'd like to see a, particularly one of the new names behind my farm. I've been only there for almost 50 years now. And I happen to take pictures, which I leave on my phone in July. There's as much water as what's on the floor right there, which is none. And that's not the first year. So on any one of these, I would like to see water flow charts that actually demonstrate what kind of water that we're talking about. Because it matters to me what the definition, for instance, when you look at these 46 that you say that are not named, I only happen to be dealing with one, what the definition of that is. Somebody's calling it a brook. Okay, are we going to take up Webster's Dictionary on what a brook is or a stream? Or why is it not an ocean? Or why is it not a pond or something of that sort? So for me, water means a really lot about, I've already looked all these up. It says continuous flow of water. When I have pictures in July of 2024 where there isn't any, that's a problem. When I have pictures in July of 2024 where there isn't any, that's a problem. The other thing that bothers me is that when something doesn't have a name, and then has a name, and I found this out also from a guy that used to be actually the, the Agency of Agriculture's enforcement officer, that all crossings are not even registered. So we have crossed a new named piece of water. That's not permitted any longer, but you need to go through the channels and get permits to do that. So that's really important to know, because, um, you could end up naming these inadvertently and then creating a piece of landlocked property because of the rights of the water. I learned a bunch, being the emergency management person for the town in Irene in 2011. The state, and even the Army Corps of Engineers, believe it or not, A and R have, they own the water, but the persons own the land, including underneath whatever water that is. It's kinda weird, but that's what it is. So the actual water definitions, the water flow charts would be very helpful to me. The Army, the A and R. The other problem that I have is, some of these blue line squiggly maps that I've seen, the lines on there are seasonal runoff that contribute to the water flow from wherever the people are talking about. Also, man-made drainage does the same thing. On my place over to Lottery Lane, there's records, and even in the back of my farm, there is, a Farm Service Agency actively involved in making cost improvement money to make that water go different places. So that's happened over the years. Right, my neighbor next door, uh, built a pond in nineteen sixty. And the overflow comes down on my land. All of the man-made drainage contributes to the little blue lines that you see somewhere, all along the way. I, I don't think that every one of these are as cut and dried, um, as it seems. So I, I guess I didn't, yeah, I, well, one more thing, and it's a big thing. Over the years, the beavers, I wish they would work for me. Throwing hay. They can create quite a lot of, um, movement in any one of these. I get A and R involved, and trappers, and things of that.
What, what was the point of, of the beavers?
They're, they, they can create a problem, um, especially on ag land, where they're, they'll, they'll create more of a backup in the water that, that would run away seasonally. So the appearance would be that there's something there. There's a big one up above Tilson, which is above me. Creating, over time, the disappearance of farms has created less, and then a driveway went in, and so forth. So man-made and nature and whatever creates more. Oh, I also saw on this report where it didn't just take up water naming, it took up quite a significant bunch of acreage to wetlands.
Right.
Kinda new to me, I don't think it has anything to do with the project. It says waterway naming. But now, it's gone way beyond that. Very quickly, there's a piece of property that's also on here that names one of these swamps. I don't think any topography maps were used. So, at the bottom of Little Scutney Mountain, for instance, I own quite a bit of property. And, I only think like the glacier might have done this, because there are, it's not just like ten acres of swamp. It's, it's, it's quite high elevation, and then it will go down, even at the bottom of a mountain. So it's not just a blanket approach, just saying, okay, I think this looks like a swamp. I think, well, I know it's not. And it's out with the flood plain. Does anybody know where the, I think it's the Eddie Cemetery is? It's the one out by, uh, Smith's Land, on the flats, up in Red. That's a similar type of mound that I'm talking about. That is not in a flood plain. So I own more that's on the south, or getting more of that. So, I saw this where you said, like, um, I don't know if the, I'm naming swamps here. Or you renamed the swamp, uh, as the blanket, like Little Scutney Wetland. I know there's some water there, I get that, but it's not the limit that it is. I, I, I've learned this from the Agency of State. There is no minimum wetland, I mean, it could be one foot by one. But, I don't, I don't know about this. I guess that's it.
Nate? Um, just for my own clarification, I thought when you presented last time, that these are all named, but generic names, and we're just giving them the local names, that? So they're already established as wetlands and streams? That this was just naming the, the local name?
Um, no, so this, it, it originated with streams, and that's how it was brought to the board. They had generic names, they wanted real names for, the multiple names, and, and that, and then, so, I think it was Marie Caduto was, was the advisor to it, but, um, she also, and Elizabeth Thompson, who's an ecologist, um, who wrote the, um, Weathersfield's Biological Natural Areas of Weathersfield, which is used in our zoning bylaws. It basically identifies, um, landscape features that are significant that the town thought was worth protecting. So that's referenced in the town plan and in the bylaws. She also suggested naming the, the wetlands. So, I think included in that is, um, certain wetlands, and the, it, it must be in the methods, but, um, how they determine which wetlands and what size and significance. But it also has, uh, waterfalls, um, and, and maybe some other water features. So it, it's, it is water bodies generally. And the, the request from the state was specific to streams. But we have lots of named things around town, hills and, and so forth. So, it, to the, to the same value of putting names on those features, it was considered for wetlands and waterfalls and things like that.
But the point was to give it a name, not to say, oh, this is, no, that's not.
Yeah, it doesn't delineate where the wetland is, and things like that, yeah. So, just to back up, um, to the, to the point about stream flows, one thing that, that the, um, Agency of Agriculture person provided was the, the RAP's, um, definition for water body, I guess, surface water. They say surface water or waters means all rivers, streams, brooks, reservoirs, ponds, lakes, springs, and all bodies of surface water, artificial or natural, which are contained within or flow through or bordered by the state. So basically, those, that's what they call state waters, and that's what the RAPs regulate. And, um, what was the other thing that he had? So, he, he provided basically in, an entire section, section seven of the, um, of the RAPs, which is exclusion of livestock from waters of the state. And so it talks about all the different standards and things like that, but he follows up with, this means that livestock are allowed to access streams and river corridors, named or unnamed, so long as they meet the requirements. So they have standards for how they protect water quality and things like that. And so as long as those requirements are being met, you can access them for watering your livestock or crossing them, things like that.
I'm, I'm gonna come on in on something Dave said, it had to do with farms and beavers. I live at Kendrick's Corners. We have a beaver pond right there at, at, at the Jensen. You look at the Jensen farm going north. The Jensen farm and the property I live on was always farmland. But that is now a class-two, um, uh, state-protected wetland. Things can change. That's what Dave's point was, I think, when it comes to beavers, is you, you might have a seasonal, uh, stream that someday is a, a wetland. Cause I think that's what that was, coming down through there, was, actually, it might have been more than a seasonal stream, because there's culverts and, and, you know, that was there. You said you contacted, um, I think you were just talking about A and R. In, in talking with A and R, there's Act 250, uh, District Two in Springfield, which is part of A and R. In the Act 250 process, um, if somebody's trying to develop something that's under Act 250 review, people have to apply for, uh, intervenor status. And as an intervenor, uh, they could invoke, um, a statement that there's a stream right through the middle of a, a development site. Now, if, if, let's say that it's a seasonal stream, which I think, again, is another point Dave was making. It's a seasonal stream, has water now, doesn't have water in, in the, uh, summer. Doesn't have livestock, fish-type things going on. But we name that now. Where, what kind of standing does that put that person in that's going after a permit with Act 250? Is that, uh, grounds to deny a permit and, and declare that a stream?
The name alone?
Yes.
Yeah, that, it, it would not. And so Dave said that the, putting a name on it does change the regulatory oversight, which I have been able, I have not been able to get someone to agree to that. And so I'll, I can share the email exchanges, um, but basically, both of them say that we have our standards for regulation, regardless of whether there's a name on it or not, it, it, it is what it is.
Well, they confirmed it, though. You said that you're under the rap, uh, for, for livestock.
Yeah.
And you named something.
So, so if, no, but that's not, that's named or, or not. If, if, if the RAPs apply to that stream, they apply to that stream, whether it has a name or it doesn't.
Well, the problem is, I'm debating whether it's a stream.
Okay, but, yeah, but that's not the state's definition for under the RAPs.
What is that, what does that acronym stand for?
Required agricultural practices.
So that's just a piece of it, though, for me. So what other definitions does the town have to?
The town only regulates a four-foot channel.
Of what?
A channel, just the channel, a stream. So regardless of whether there's water that flows through it or not, that channel is what determines whether or not it's a protected stream. Wherever the regulatory, wherever the regular high watermark is. So in a drought year, there might not be any water, and it's, which is why it's measured, which is why these were, um, established based on watershed size, not flow rates. And just to, just to explain, a watershed is basically where all of the water in a given area drains to. So, um, if you're on one side of the map, we're all, it, we're all in several watersheds. We're in the Atlantic watershed, we're in the Black River watershed, the Connecticut River watershed, and so on. And so there are several that, that overlap. And so, the, the determination as to whether or not these streams should be named was based on, um, does it drain, um, at least five acres of land? Or, no, 500 acres of land. If, that, that number might not be the right number, but the watershed size was the determining factor. So regardless of whether or not you're seeing water flow through there or not, it might be because of beavers, it might be because of irrigation, or, or any of the other things that influence water flow, it's within the 500-acre watershed, which is why it, it shows up.
I don't, I don't agree.
Could you, could, uh, could you, could you please go up and state your name too, please?
I was just looking at your agenda packet, and I noticed that it says over 200 acres. It's 200 acre, 200-plus acres.
Great, thank you, Chris.
And you are?
I'm Logan Nicole, now a Senator, please.
Thank you. Dave?
I just don't think it meets the definition of it because of seasonal runoff. I get it, there's some water. The definition from Webster's Dictionary, and I'm not buying that, that the town owns that channel, whatever dimension that you have, because that is not what Agency of Natural Resources tells me. That is not what Army Corps of Engineers tells me. I own the land down on Upper Falls Road, I was there during Irene. They told me clearly that I own every inch of wa- of land under what they said was their water at the Black River.
Right, yes, and it will continue to be your land. There's, there's no, no changing that.
But you're saying that the town, you just told me that the town owns some channel, even if it's dry?
No, they regulate that channel.
The town does?
Yes. And, so to your point about whether or not your stream meets the definition, it, it doesn't matter whether it has a name or not. If, if it apply, if the RAPs apply to it, they apply to it. And if, and if they don't, then they don't. Even if it's named, a, a named stream, if they don't apply, they don't apply. That's, that's the regulatory portion of it. The naming of it doesn't change anything.
Dave, we actually had, uh, language in the zoning that, that added some of those regulations to seasonal, uh, type streams. And we corrected that, uh, about ten or fif- ten years ago, at least. And that's, that's where the, I think Gil Widmore was still here. And that, that's where the four-foot came from, that we, we, we had to get to some size, kinda like we're, the last hearing we just had, we had to get to some size, uh, uh, to identify what, what we were. Because along with protecting that is stream bank protections, and et cetera, et cetera. You know, you know, so there's areas that you can't develop within the distance of that stream bank, so.
Yeah, and so our intention is certainly not to change any regulatory aspect of it. And, and if it was, we wanna know that, and we probably wouldn't be proposing it in, in the same way, or, or at all. Our understanding is that it doesn't, and everyone that I've gone to agrees that it doesn't. And, and it, it might be helpful, Dave, if you would sh- uh, clarify the concern, cause I think, I share your concerns about prohibiting people from using their land as they need to. But every, all the feedback we've gotten is that it doesn't impact it.
I don't think I can get any clearer. I think I was speaking English when I was reading off my points here.
Okay, but your concern is that it's, it is or is not a stream. And so regardless of whether it is or it isn't?
Well, then how are we living as a town this way? Because it's Plains Road, Plains Road? We have clear definitions of what the road and the right of way is.
Yeah.
We have definitions of everything.
But it's, it's defined in the, in the regulation.
Not to me, you're not, you're not making any sense to me, then. And maybe I'm just the stupidest person in the room.
So, do, are you saying that by naming the stream, the regulations change, or are changed?
Yes, that's what I got confirmed by Doug Johnstone. He worked it for years as the enforcement officer at the Agency of Agriculture.
Okay.
The names do define, similarly to what Plains Road says about forty-nine and a half feet on my road.
Okay.
It's similar. They do matter. It matters when you need to.
If that's, so I'm gonna follow up with him, because that's, it's important for us to know. And so, everything that we've gotten is that it doesn't change anything? So I'll follow up with him, and if he gives us different information, then I'll come back and share that.
It's not just, it's not doing with agriculture. I wanna make you clear on this. It's about crossings to get from property to property. You mentioned animals, that's fine. Suppose somebody wants to put a road in, you go. If it's named, a, a different process to cross water.
You need a permit.
If it's named.
Okay, I, so I, I disagree with you there, but I think that you're not prohibiting someone from crossing the stream. There is a process for crossing any size stream, might be the Connecticut River. And there's a, a permitting process that's in place for the protection of water quality. That's, that's the intent of having permits in the first place, for crossing water.
Okay, so, what if I have a seasonal stream, and I wanna put my house there? And you've named that stream? Am I now not moving a stream that is shown on a map?
If it wasn't re- regulated before, then it's not regulated once the name's on there.
I, I, I kinda hear what Dave's saying, where I, I struggle to believe that. I know you've been told that, I'm not doubting you. But I struggle to, to swallow that the state would, or somebody wouldn't step in, again.
So, but to your, to your point, those, the, I guess that's, a small stream that, that does not drain greater than 200 acres, does not, does not show up here. And I think that's kind of what you're envisioning in your head, is a, a small seasonal flow that, um, that if we put a name on it, would, would now be regulated. And so, if we did name something that was a very small stream, and, um, and it triggered someone to go look at it, they would go out and, it's not, the, their determination for whether or not they have jurisdiction would not be, on that list of, of qualifiers would not be, does it have a name? It would be something to the effect of, what is the size of the watershed? What is the width of the channel? It might be water flows, if that's how it's regulated, I don't know of a stream that is regulated that way because of seasonal changes. Does that answer that?
How do they determine that that stream is, is, uh, affecting 200 acres or more?
So, there's basically, the easiest way is there's a program, an online program. You can put a, um, coordinate anywhere, and it tells you what the acreage of the watershed is. And so these were measured at the- And so these were measured at the, at the, at some point on the stream. I forget if that's where it outlets into a bigger stream, probably. You put the point there, and it tells you what size is the, is the watershed. So I think they went around and clicked on each stream.
But, but a watershed could be two, three, four, 500 acres. Dave, you'll follow this, I think, I think everybody will, actually. And it could have several actual streams. Let's say somebody goes in and, and logs an area of forest in that area, and with their skidder, they actually create some, some ruts in some low-lying areas, that all of a sudden, now you have a seasonal stream, winter runoff, starts creating what looks like a stream or a brook. And you're connected to three or four, 500 acres. Think of where I am, all of Baltimore Hill, the low-lying, the lower hills going up into Hox Mountain. The, the firm next to me alone is 80 acres, so it's not
Yeah.
pretty conceivable that I'm in a watershed that's four, five, or six, or even more, maybe thousands of acres in size. And now all of a sudden, we've got a, a seasonal stream with a name on it, and if somebody wants to do some sort of development, I have no, I'm not developing anything, just so people are clear, I'm just trying to get to the bottom of this. I, I still really struggle with the fact that somebody can't come in and, and say, well, no, it's a named stream, it's a stream, you can't do anything near. I, I struggle with that.
Okay, so the, I think the two regulating bodies that are involved are A&R and the Agency of Agriculture. And so A&R says blue-line streams. So I don't know exactly how blue-line streams are defined, but those are, those are existing and established, and naming of other streams, we probably are naming things that aren't on, that aren't blue-line streams. I can't, I don't know exactly, but. So their, their regulatory oversight's not gonna change regardless of how many little seeps we give names to. Blue-line streams are what they regulate. And the required agricultural practices apply to, to the surface waters as they define them, which does it include, does it or does it not have a name?
Okay. All right. Dave, you've requested, and I think you've made a statement that you're gonna follow up with, what's his name?
Johnston.
Johnston? So, so Doug Johnston, okay. So that means more information for yous. Everybody okay where we're at with this for tonight?
I just, I mean, hopefully that Ryan's got all the questions, so that we can write forward on it at the next meeting, so as long as he can follow up with everything that he understands.
I understand, I go to the swamps, too, so I'm gonna be, you know, I want a, I don't know if anybody did come on my property. If they did, they better have asked. I want a topography. I, I don't want a blanket approach to this swamp designation, because it's wrong.
But, Dave, am I right in that what you're looking at is what would be the impact of accepting this?
Yes.
If any, right?
Oh, no, I know there is.
Well, and I think that's what, what Ryan is looking to follow up on to answer that question, and just making sure he knows who to follow up with, 'cause, right, you don't wanna make a decision that would have a big impact. I saw this as a cultural naming, not as a, like regulatory naming, and so that, but if there's a crossover, I think that's important to understand.
In the town zoning, there is.
In the town zoning, it doesn't talk about names.
No, no, it talks about regulation, about water, whatever setbacks.
Right.
And I gotta tell ya, the town has nothing on A&R and NRCS and the rest of them, what we're dealing with, Irene, because those regulations go way over the top. The town, I, that's why I didn't understand why the town did what they did. They don't have to. It's already in place.
You mean the zoning regulations, yeah.
And my question would be, can, can we remove any of these from this list?
Yeah, it, it, they could be removed.
We could make the suggestion to remove it.
Right.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
So just to clarify, the question that I'm gonna go out and try and get an answer to is whether or not putting a name on a stream
Or a wetland.
Or, or, okay, or wetland, changes its jurisdiction.
And you're going to Doug Johnstone, I said, Johnston, I, you said? And is that the question, Dave, is that you want him to ask?
That's one of them. I mean, I, Ryan's obviously saying the things that I disagree with. I, I honestly think that when you name something with water, that it has to have a continuous flow of water, otherwise, how can you name it a stream, or a brook, or something? I mean, why is it named that? Why isn't it named the Plains Desert? It's strange to me, that's all.
Okay.
I mean, is a house a house anymore?
So, do you want to submit written questions to, to Ryan?
Perfect.
Okay, perfect.
Maybe I'll join the town conversation.
Be a conversation committee, excellent. You're welcome. Absolutely. Great.
All right, thank, thank you, Ryan. Uh, Dave, you get those questions over to him as soon as you can, so he can get onto that, of course. I, will that be on our next agenda, you think, or? That'll be up to Ryan.
Ryan, do you think the next, the next meeting is sufficient time to get an answer to those questions?
Probably. Well, I don't know if I should say probably, I'm reaching out to the state, so.
We can go a little, we can go a little further. We'll, we'll wait to hear from you.
Sure.
When, when Brendan says you're ready, I'll put it on the agenda. Okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
Yep. Act 181 update, Jason Rasmussen.
I'm gonna try to be quick.
Please stop me with questions.
I actually have a question, but BL's gone. Act 181, how long has we had a legislature? And they're only on 181? Boy, they're not getting much done, are they?
They number them each year, so. Last year was a busy year. So, again, my name's Jason Rasmussen, I'm, this time, different hat, I'm with Madison Scotty Regional Commission. I really just wanna make you aware, if you're not already, about this Act 181. It is impactful for, for you as a town, so I just wanna make sure there's some basic awareness, and, so Act 181 was passed last year, it was referred to as House Bill 687, a lot of people talk about as the Act 250 bill. So there's a, a lot of information in this act, it's literally like yay big. I'm gonna talk about, really, the land use aspects of it that, that I think you wanna be aware of if you're not already. So in it, it, it changed a lot of things. The premise was primarily housing, and the thought was to make, make the regulatory process easier to create housing. So it created some Act 250 exemptions. Right now, today, there's interim Act 250 exemptions in the areas surrounding your designated village centers, so in Perkinsville and in the Scotty, right now, there are some interim exemptions for housing. Those are gonna be in place through December of 2026. After that point, the regional plans, future land use map, is gonna, in more refined way, define those areas better, and that will ultimately become, you know, the analogous to these Act 250 exemptions. Right now, housing developments of up to 50 units on up to 10 acres are exempt in those areas. And so that's what we're talking about here. So the Regional Planning Commission is gonna be working on our regional plan, well, we already started, and I think we're meeting, Ryan, with you soon, review Thursday. We're starting to reach out to all of our towns, and ultimately, planning commissions, and you, the select board, we can come back to at some point, to talk in more detail about what this means, and what the map looks like, and get some feedback to, we really wanna just make sure that we're working with you to determine how, how to make sense of this thing. I'm imagining that we're gonna be focusing around your designated village centers, as they are now, so Scotty and Perkinsville, and then we're gonna work our way around those areas and call it, you know, where's the village? Where's the village end? And we're gonna try to delineate those, and, and we gotta, you know, map the whole town, and a lot of these are gonna have some implications on Act 250. And so I'm gonna keep it really short and sweet. It's impactful, though, and we're in a place where we'd like to look at your town plan and have that feed our regional plan, but we're, we have very prescribed categories we gotta work with, so it's gonna be different, and I think we're gonna be, you know, we're gonna have some, we're gonna have some conversations that we don't always maybe agree on, but we're gonna work with you on it, and we're just gonna wanna make sure that everyone here in the select board, everyone in the planning commission, is helping us to come up with the right map. That's really the, that's the update. If there's questions, I will do my best to answer them.
Questions? So the Act, Act 250 exemption is, is, did you say up to 50 units are exempt?
At this point, yes.
This point?
Yep, yep.
In resident, it used to be in residential area, in, in a residential zone, Act 250 didn't really have any say over, unless there's already an Act 250 permit in place on a piece of property. Act 250 doesn't have any say or is not involved in residential development, and only gets involved in commercial development on greater than 10 acres. Is that still in place, or has that changed as well?
It is still in place.
Okay.
Yep. And, you know, a lot of this is specifically looking at where there is water and sewer service, you don't have both, you have some water, obviously, but you don't have both. So, you know, this may not really apply in, in its most full, fullest sense to Weathersfield, but nonetheless, it does, you are in these areas right now, and we wanna just, we wanna work with you to make sure that we create our map in the best way possible that serves Weathersfield residents.
I'm, I, you know I'm on the planning commission.
Yep.
So I'm trying to ask some of these questions to set these guys up
Yep.
to my right, for the next time this comes back here, 'cause there'll be, there'll be hearings and stuff. So, forestry is regulated greater than, how many acres? Like clearcutting?
I don't know the answer to that offhand, do you?
I think it's 25 acres, clear cut.
25 acres?
Would require heavy cut permit.
Okay. And, and that, as far as we know, that's still standing?
Are you sure? I thought it was 40.
I, I thought it was, too, Dave, unless they changed it to 25.
Usually, 40 sounds like the right number.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Dave. That, that's what I thought it was, too. Anyway, any, any questions for Jason? Thank you for your time tonight, Jason, you've been here a long time.
No problem, thank you.
We'll see you over at the planning commission. Any, anything else on this? I think we're done with Jason there's. Vision Zero resolution, Logan Nickel.
As well as me. So Logan Nicole, Madison County Regional Commission, I'm on the transportation program. So you should've gotten a resolution in your packets to adopt a goal of zero deaths. I have been working under a, the Madison County Regional Commission received a federal grant under this program, it's called Safe Streets and Roads for All, to develop a safety action plan for our area that would, and so the goal of the safety action plan has to be to get to zero deaths, it's part of, you know, it's part of this federal program. If we develop the plan, it will open up about a billion dollars in grants for funding to, for implementation projects. And as part of developing a plan, we have to ask all of our member towns to adopt this resolution, establishing a goal of zero deaths. So I've just been making rounds. The language that you have in front of you is mostly from a model language that I pulled, you know, out of the, the, the program, establishing the grant. It is, it was adopted by the, the Board of Commissioners for the Regional Commission, and then, and then now it's been adopted by nine of the 11 legislative bodies for the region. You would be the 10th. Definitely happy to answer any questions. The basics are that it, it basically just says that you establish a goal of zero deaths, and that we seek to get to that goal by 2040, which is a date that we sort of developed in conjunction with a consultant that we had reviewing our data. We currently, over the last 10 years, we've had 31 deaths on our roadways, 131 serious injuries, and so they think based on that data that we could, you know, we could attack 2040 as an ambitious, but in theory, attainable goal. I think there is a general acceptance, I would say, that, you know, we're likely never actually going to eliminate deaths, but, you know, that has to be the goal of this program under this grant, and, you know, so that's what we have to achieve, or seek to achieve.
My, my first question would be, if we don't achieve that in a certain period of time, 2040, do we have to pay the money back?
No, 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 this is a non-binding resolution. It is, you know, it's advisory, it has to, you have to set the goal for the grant program to be able to go after the money. I should say as background as well, that Ray Stapleton is kind of the, one of the primary impetuses for going after, for applying for the grant that we received. He thought that this grant might be a good place to go for money for guardrail. He's kind of always searching for ways to get grants for guardrail projects. He feels like it's kinda hard to do guardrail, and projects don't always include it at the state level, state funding doesn't include it. I think that the data bears that out. We've also been trying to sort of steer the, the plan in the direction of bicycle and pedestrian facility funding. We think that that's another potential thing that we could see in our plan, is projects for implementation of bicycle facilities and, and bed facilities.
Go ahead. When you say bicycle facilities, what do you mean?
Uh, like shared lanes, or, you know, divided lanes on the highway. You know, just something that says that bikes can travel here, and they're, they're safe here. Obviously, we don't have a lot of that on our roads. I think, you know, the data, we don't have a lot of those deaths and serious injuries on our roads, but that's also just 'cause the, the roads are so dangerous that nobody even attempts it. And so we've been sort of trying to steer the, the plan to the extent that we can in the direction of making sure that we say that we do want those facilities, we do seek to have more bike lanes and bike facilities on our roadways, you know, to make it safer.
So is that going to provide funding to widen those roads? Pave those roads, pave those areas, or?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think that the funding could come in any, you know, in any source. I think, you know, we do have wider shoulders in a lot of places that just don't, they don't have a lane designated, but we have a, a shoulder that would be theoretically wide enough to account for it. And so, you know, it does require some planning and some thought when you're repaving, but, you know, I think some of that could just be that. Other places, you may need to widen the road, other places, you know, you may actually be able to, to put in some sort of barrier, and so you have an actual divided lane.
Now, how does that affect us when it comes to whether it's a town road or a state road in the town?
I think this is, I mean, this is, you know, this is all hypothetical, this is, projects that we would use this grant for down the road would have to go into the safety action plan now, and they're probably gonna be the bigger roads, we're talking bigger stretches. Because it's federal money, it's really not gonna be cost-effective to apply for a grant on, you know, like a town road necessarily. You know, applying for federal money, it's, you, you have to jump through a lot of extra hoops, and so you're really only gonna do that for a bigger project, in general.
So this, it sounds like this is generally focused more on the state highways, anyway?
I would expect, yeah. I mean, I, I think that it's, it all depends on what the plan says, and where the plan really, you know, where we highlight the need
I think it depends on where the safety issue is.
That as well, yeah.
And, and I, I'll try to make this my last one, and then somebody else can ask some questions. So in, in regard to that, actually, on a state highway, signage and safety controls for dangerous intersections, egress?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, and that's, I mean, that is something that I am asking for, just take this opportunity to plug, I do have a, we released the story map, we call it, which is, it's like an interactive map and a webpage that you can go on, and you can see the current data, where we currently have deaths and serious injuries on our roadways. have deaths and serious injuries on our roadways, where we currently see problem areas. And you can see all the data. And then at the bottom of that, we have a survey where we're allowing people to, you know, drop a pin on the map and say, I think this location is dangerous when you're walking, or I think this location is dangerous when you're in a car, and this is why, this is the type of incident I've had there. We're really asking people to engage with that survey. That's how we're gonna write this plan. And if we call out locations like that in the plan, then we'll be able to use this, you know, this billion dollars in funding, we'll be able to use that for some of those projects.
The, the, sorry, I thought I was finished. I just wanna, the interim bylaw that we just passed for the childcare is in a precarious somewhat location, and that's why I brought up the question about those signs. I'm aware of several incidences out there already, so that's, that's high on my radar to get on that list. And now I'll turn it over to anybody else. Rika, go ahead.
No, I was, I've lost my track now, but not to worry.
What?
Since that's where I live, I'm keenly aware of how, oh, I know, I was gonna ask you, you mentioned that there is this map with the pin drops. Is that on the Mark site, or where is that?
It's on the Mark webpage. I've also been, I've been sharing it on Facebook to try to get it out. I think I posted it on like a Weathersfield community page fairly recently, but if you go to the Mark webpage, you'll, you'll see it right there on, just on the Mark webpage homepage, if you scroll down a little bit. It's called SS4A, Safe Streets and Roads for All.
That's right, yep.
Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
I, I do know that Ray is interested in any avenues that can open up to him for grants. He's always looking for that.
Do you need a motion to adopt?
That is my ask, yes.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I would make an, I would make a motion to adopt this.
And I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the Zero Resolution for the Town of Weathersfield. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And any abstentions? The motion, I'm sorry, the motion carries.
Do you have a copy to sign?
Oh, I do.
Okay, great, thank you.
Pull up the date, 5-0.
Do you have a copy of the other paper as well to sign? I think you need another.
We giving that to him right now, or you just deal with it later?
I was wondering if I had to print it or not.
Perfect. That takes us to Upper Falls Covered Bridge, storm repair damage?
I think I'm.
Yeah, he has the next.
I'm next on the, right after that, there's another thing for, for me.
Oh, the, I'm sorry, the scoping study. I skipped one.
Yes.
Yep, scoping study on Mark.
Appreciate it.
So we recently, we had somebody that worked with us, Malia Cordero, she left and moved to Maine. She was serving as a municipal project manager on a state federal grant that you got to do scoping for some pedestrian improvements in Perkinsville. And so this is just a formality. I am hoping to step into that role, municipal project manager. It's basically just writing an RFP for you to hire a consultant to do that work, but the state, you know, kinda makes us jump through this extra hoop and just say that you, you do want me to take over in that role, and I just need you to sign that letter if you so choose.
That would also require a motion, correct?
Yes.
Do I hear that motion? I believe this is, we, we did ask for this. Well, I think the first time we talked about it, we, we went away from it, then we, it came back again, and we agreed to do the scoping study, which is, which is to just evaluate. I think this has to do with the widening of the area through Perkinsville.
I think the reason why we stepped away from it is because they wanted us to put money, or invest in widening the state highway, right? Is that, is this what this one was?
So this is a tap grant. It's basically just for pedestrian improvements. I guess I don't know that, that there's much plan.
That is what we're.
To do something, but it was state road and it didn't.
Right, well, if it's Perkinsville.
Yeah, yeah.
Pedestrian, that's a state road.
Yeah.
But it's from Coria Road to Voyserton Field, and it's not gonna happen because you take a look at that thing, there's ice and maple trees on private property, you just cut that, it's gonna be really difficult.
But, but again, that was, that was the original discussion we had, and we said no, and then we brought it back to the board, and we agreed to do the scoping study to research the thing. Doesn't do anything more than that, and we did agree to do that. And now what this is, is just a, a changing of who's handling it at Mark because of a change of personnel. So we're just accepting that he's gonna take over the scoping studies, and that's it. It's not moving beyond that at this point.
Yeah, this is no design build, it's basically, I think the idea probably is just to figure out if there is a way to improve pedestrian access without coming across those, cutting down trees and doing those things.
Right. So, motion to accept, motion, Logan Nickel, I got it right that time?
Yeah. I usually use Nicole, not that, I'm, I'm not particular, but, yeah.
Logan Nicole as the, what would you be?
Municipal project manager.
Okay.
On the Weathersfield FY24 tap grant.
Nicole, you have that? Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
That motion.
Do I hear a second?
I can second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve or accept Logan Nicole as the project manager? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. You got the job. Aren't you lucky?
Hey, I'll send these back to you tomorrow.
Yeah.
And now it's Upper Falls Covered Bridge, storm repair damage. Upper, award, Upper Falls Bridge, doesn't say covered bridge. Upper Falls Bridge Bid, Storm Damage. Is that the covered bridge on Upper Falls? It's not?
Uh, yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Okay, so it is the covered bridge?
Yep.
I was trying to think of another bridge out there. Wasn't getting there. Okay, you handling that?
Yeah, so the, the Upper Falls Covered Bridge was damaged during the July floods. We have a site plan that was completed. We sent out the project for bid, and the scope of work is there on page one. We received three bids back. The low bid is $147,777, and the low bidder is Engineers Construction. So these are federal funds. They require us to always accept a low bidder unless there's substantial reasoning not to, and in this case, there is not. So I'd just be asking for a motion to approve the Engineers Construction bid for a total cost not to exceed $147,777 with a completion date no later than July 31st of 2025.
Do I hear that motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion on the motion to approve the Engineers Construction bid?
And how much do we have to come up with for this?
I have good news, it's just 2.5 percent, so. They moved it from 12.5 percent to 2.5 percent.
Ooh, that's nice.
We, we saved substantial money doing that.
Oh, stupid phone. I hate stupid phones and stupid things on stupid phones. I am just calculating that number, is what I'm doing, but I have some sort of virus that's been a really stupid pain in my phone. Uh, yeah, so 2.5 percent of that is about $3,700. It's, it's actually, it's $3,694, and would be 43 cents.
I think we can afford that.
Well, that's up to him. It was out of his paycheck.
Yeah.
Well, there's further news, but I'll, I'll wait until the time ends.
Yes. So we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion on the motion? We understand that there's about $3,800 in matching funds for this. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Engineers Construction wins the bid for that construction. Second-class liquor license is.
Make a motion that we, how do we do this? Accept the tobacco and liquor licenses for second-class license for Fireside Beverage LLC and Sandry Sonoco and Tobacco License.
The, the only thing I have an issue with is, I think we do have to do the tobacco separate as it's a separate item on the agenda.
Yep.
So we can do the second-class liquor licenses together, Fireside Beverage and Sandry, number 204. We can do those together.
But we need to be on a separate one?
We can do those separately, the liquor licenses separately, and we have to do the tobacco separate because it's a separate item on the agenda.
Oh.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Do I hear a second? So the motion is for second-class liquor licenses for Fireside Beverage LLC and Sandry Number 204. And we have a second to that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Any changes in the applications?
No, we don't have any issues with it.
Rika, I believe, was the second, right?
Sorry, yes. I nodded my head, didn't say it out loud.
Any further questions or discussion on this motion?
Thanks.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve second-class liquor licenses for Fireside Beverage LLC and Sandry 204 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Need a motion to approve the tobacco license for Sandry Number 204?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second now.
Motion's made and seconded to approve tobacco license for Sandry 204. Same question, any changes in the application?
No issues.
And no issues. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries as well. Town manager update?
All right, I have a couple of quick updates. The first update is that all of our FEMA projects are obligated. Should probably wait.
No.
Time's ticking.
It's his problem.
So everyone has a copy of the FY26 budget, and that's the final copy that's gonna go into the town annual report. The, the front cover is the, I guess I wanted to ask the board, usually what we do is we put the proposed tax rate in the annual report, and we show what it looks like if all articles pass, and that's what I've done here. Is that the, what the board would like to do this year, or do we wanna take out the $80,000 special article, or how do you guys want me to proceed with that?
Wait, have we done that with the special articles in the past? Have we included it? Has it always been on their side?
Yeah, we typically do include it, at, at least as long as I've been here. I just wanted to make sure nothing changed with that. So if, if all articles pass, then the tax rate would increase by 6 cents. It's an 8.47 percent change, if all articles pass.
Okay.
Sorry.
Any questions on the, on the FY26 budget? All right, there was a Fire Department Committee meeting on Wednesday, February 5th at 6:30. Anyone is welcome to attend. Minutes and agendas are posted on the website under the Fire Department page.
Can you say when that is again?
It's Wednesday, February 5th at 6:30 PM downstairs, right here. And those occur the first Wednesdays of every month at the same time. Occasionally, we'll have to change it forward to 7 o'clock if one of the Fire Department members has a job that's running a little late, but.
6:30, did you say?
Yeah.
6:30.
All of our FEMA projects right now are, are currently obligated. So like I was saying before, our cost share went from 12.5 percent down to 2.5 percent, which is really good news for us because we were anticipating well into 100, I think it was like $170,000 worth of expense, actually nearly $200,000 worth of expenses, and now we're looking at $30,000 in total expenses. But the state of Vermont sent us a $30,000 payment for additional disaster relief, so it's just gonna, kinda level everything out so we don't have anything coming out of pocket here from local tax dollars. When we obligated our three large projects, we obligated, or FEMA obligated, our Escutney Basin Bridge project for $891,000. And we went through the competitive bid process and so forth, and, well, first, we did the temporary bridge, and that was $69,500, and then we had to pay $1,500 a month to rent the bridge. After, after that, we sent the project out to bid while the bridge was being engineered, after the bridge was engineered, and the bids came in at 343,810 was a little bidder, plus the temporary bridge and the rental fee. We ended up spending $429,810. On the Upper Falls Covered Bridge project, FEMA only obligated $123,000, but we just spent $147,000. So there's a little bit of a, a difference between the amount that they obligated and the amount of FEMA funding that we'll receive. Our final project is Little Escutney Bridge project. They obligated $123,000. They gave us another $98,000 for mitigation funds, to mitigate that area even further. So in the case that the Little Escutney Bridge project remains with, within budget, which we expect it to, we still have $436,899.84 remaining in FEMA funds. So what happened is Ray and I held a meeting today with FEMA and with the Vermont Emergency Management to basically close out our 4720 with the feds, and then they transitioned us over to the state, and Jim Tonkovich was with us today. And we asked a question, what, what do we do with the remaining $436,000? And I'm just gonna read this into the record.
He said, go out to dinner?
So, and this is, I think Dave will be really pleased to hear this, and everybody will, but, well, we were talking about reserve accounts and purchasing equipment and so forth earlier, and where the money would come from, so Jim Tonkovich said, as to the 400-plus thousand dollar difference, that is the towns to keep to spend on town projects such as mitigation work, improvements that are needed around the town, or a piece of equipment, for example. So we've just gained $436,000.
Be nice.
I think I see a smile down there.
I think he's supposed to dance on the table or something.
He doesn't wanna smile.
That's a true devilish, a coyote ugly, now come on.
So those are my three updates for tonight. That's it.
Excellent.
So with that $436,000, that, that is something you'll, you'll wanna come back here to make some decisions on where you want to put that, just how you wanna?
Yeah, I think at this point, we wait to see, we wait to make sure, we're gonna be going out to bid here for the Little Escutney Bridge project. Let's see what the bids come back at, and then, I mean, we have a little over 200, 220,000 there. I mean, till, till we see what the bids come back on, and then we can reconcile everything and determine exactly what the number is, and then from there make decisions.
Well, I'd let the Upper Falls get completed in case there's some, something unforeseen comes up there.
Yep.
You know, and then, anyway, at a later date, we'll figure out what to do with whatever balance is left.
Where's the Little Escutney Bridge?
Little Escutney Bridge?
Isn't that what you said? The third project was the Little Escutney Bridge?
Yeah, it's on Little Escutney Road.
Yeah. Isn't that, I can't think of anything bigger than a culvert.
It's, it's a smaller bridge, it's not very large.
Off of, off of 106, it's right at the beginning.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
And it's got a really, it's got a really screwed-up entry coming into it, so it hammers the wall.
Yep.
What do we call those walls on those bridges?
Walls.
Yeah, wing walls. Thank you. You're all set, Brendan, with your update?
I'm all set with my update. I did receive an application today, I think everybody has it. For an appointment request.
The Veterans Committee?
Yep, from-
That would be under appointments.
Yep.
We haven't gotten that far yet.
We're not there yet. But, I wrote it, Dan, I got it on the list.
Okay.
So, you're all set with the town manager update?
All set.
Future agenda items, road sign discussion, personnel policy, purchasing policy. Anything else that anybody needs to see there right now?
Is there anything from tonight we need to put on there?
We have the naming waterways discussion. The minute corrections. That's it, that's all I have.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else is thinking it needs to be there?
Right offhand.
Appointments? We do have a letter from August Murray requesting appointment to the Veterans Committee. Yes.
I brought this up to the town clerk not too long ago. If you look back to where the Veterans Memorial Committee was officially formed in, I want to say, 2012, maybe. It's not the original committee. But, we never had a formal structure when we got started on the project. And then, after the, after Chip Cobb left, and the memorial was completed and dedicated, I had come to the board and asked that the framework of the committee be formalized. And the board at that time created a five-member board, Dave, you remember. And all of those seats are filled, so I don't know why this has continued to say there's two vacancies. Not that I want to turn anybody away, but it is a five-member board, and all seats are filled.
Who are those members?
I'm sorry, what members?
Who are those members? The current five members on that committee?
Oh, who are the members? I couldn't understand what you're saying.
Sorry.
Who are the members? I'm the chair. My daughter Patience is on the committee. Dylan Brown, Allison Roth, and Mark Richardson.
Okay. Do we have a copy of that decision where it was set at five? That formalization?
It would be in the minutes, I can't tell you exactly what year, I'd have to look back. It was several years ago, Dave remembers. Certainly, that's the board's permission.
You have a hand up.
Yep. Yeah, I just finished the discussion over here for a second, August, and I'll get right to you. So, I missed one of the names, but that's all right, we have five names there. Do we want to take action to change that number, Dave? Or do we want to just... You want to waive it? What do we want?
What do you think? It's not really... I don't know. I don't know how that works on any one of you. I just don't know.
I know Dr. Murray, Colonel Murray, according to his application here, served in the armed forces for a very long time, and is interested in joining the Veterans Committee.
Yes. But, the question is, how do we want to deal with the limiting size of the board, or the commission, committee? Do you want to waive the... Do you want to waive the actions of the board? Do we need to see it in minutes before we do it? What do you want to do? I don't want to turn somebody away either, I agree. But, I want to make sure we get it right, too. Are the meetings closed meetings? Are there open meetings? Like, if you had volunteers that...
All our meetings are open, they're subject to the open meeting law. And John Arison, who is always our emcee at the ceremonies, he's not an official member of the committee either.
Okay. That's what I was wondering is, wouldn't, you know, if we stick with the five, it doesn't mean that Dr. Murray can't be active and...
Absolutely not. We always welcome additional volunteers.
Okay. So, but now, you're saying you're welcome to the meeting, but you don't want to actually make him a member of the committee?
I'm not saying that.
No, I was just saying that I was asking to make sure that that was something that, like, people could...
Do we have the power to waive a committee number? I don't know the answer.
Well, that's what I'm asking, I guess.
Well, you created it, I'm sure you could expand it, but I wouldn't expand it to six, that's a difficult number to work with. I would go the seven, and then, that would cover your two vacancies.
I would agree with that. Seven or nines, yeah, some other, whatever.
The only problem, obviously, the old argument, the bigger the board, sometimes the harder it is to get a quorum, but...
No. I've never heard that argument before. Would the board like to entertain a motion to increase the membership of the Veterans Committee to seven?
Yes.
Do I hear a second? I'll second that motion. We're in discussion. Motion is made and seconded to expand the Veterans Committee to seven members. Any discussion on the motion?
I guess, for me, that seems like sudden... I guess I would want to see kind of the research around why it was established at five, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I do like, I agree with not turning Veterans away, but I... That would help me make a more informed decision, just knowing, understanding the decisions and why they were made.
What are the ultimate responsibilities of the members of the Veterans Committee?
I need to jump on here, Mike.
Well-
We do not want to turn Mr. Murray down for a simple reason. His stature in Washington, DC could lead the committee, or Brandon, to opportunities to secure some kind of grant funding that you would believe. His knowledge is more than you could imagine.
Dave, I agree 100% with you, and appreciate that comment. But, right now, the comment or discussion is about changing the size of the committee.
Is that... I just... Forgive me for interrupting.
That's fine.
This seems like it should be an agenda item. This is, it seems like an action that we wouldn't take-
All it is.
It is.
Without sufficient notice of making that change.
I agree with you. And that's the purpose of the agenda review at the beginning. State law does allow us to add items, but it has to happen at the beginning of the meeting.
I was not aware that this was even happening, so...
No, me neither. This was on the table when we got here tonight. And that's fine. So, to that point, DeForest, I think you're right. I think the change in the committee should be properly warned. That could be done at the next meeting, and the adoption could then proceed following that. If that makes sense to everybody. I certainly do not want to turn Mr. Murray, Dr. Murray away. August, I think you had your hand up, so I'm going to recognize you now.
Thank you, Chairman, and I want to thank the board and the Veterans Memorial Commission. A couple of points I would make are that I would not have applied had I not seen it on the agenda and the instructions from Link to submit it to the town manager, which I followed. I'm dedicated my entire life to serving my country as young Vermonter I joined. And I put my life on the line multiple times overseas, led troops to combat, led them back. And not only retirement, my role in the community as a retired colonel is once again about service. Service to my country, service to my state. I am very active in many civic organizations and nonprofit support. My farm provides food to food shelters throughout the community. And as a veteran, I've met with the acting general face-to-face within the last couple of months. I stay active in the veterans' community. I'm closely with Sergeant Brown, as well as both DeForest and her daughter, who run the Veterans Memorial Commission. It was a tremendous honor to support them and to participate. And my request would be not to limit participation, but to add participation. This wasn't an agenda item, and I feel like it's within the board's purview. Seven is a good number, because then, as DeForest mentioned, it does allow quorum with an odd number of members. And I think that I would be delighted to serve in that capacity. I also have extensive experience as an honor guard commander, and when I was young, as a drill sergeant. And I've noticed at the ceremonies, as great as they are, they do need expertise on protocol, flag etiquette, customs, and courtesies, which I'm an expert. I've actually written books on this topic. So, I'm not trying to chew my own horn. I'm trying to say that I'm humbly dedicated to service, and I would greatly appreciate the board's vote to extend membership and add me to the board this evening. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. I would say, first of all, I absolutely would support you on that board. And I also recognize your statement that appointments are an agenda item. But, what is not an agenda item is the action of changing the number of members on that board. And perhaps that does bring up a discussion, which you mentioned, which is, should we limit it at all? I go back to what DeForest said, I have to agree with that, because I've been on committees and boards and town manager search committees, et cetera, et cetera. And we've always, we always have tried to suggest a odd number, because you don't want to end up with a balanced, you know, split, 3-3, or whatever. You want to try to create that separation. Or you have to provide that somehow, whether the chair or somebody doesn't vote unless it is a tie and they vote to break a tie. So, again, the appointments are on the agenda, but the change to the structure is not. And I think it would be appropriate for us to have that discussion. And I think this can all happen. I don't think there's anybody that's not going to support you for this, August. I would be surprised if there was. That's a personal opinion. But, I think we do need to put the item on the agenda for review of the policy for the quantity of members at the Veterans Committee.
Do you remember when it was formed?
This five-member committee? It was probably... It was more than 10 years ago, because I was the mayor, and so the town was...
I know that-
I'm sure that's why we had to...
Okay.
Might also suggest making sure the rest of our vacancies are correct, right?
Yep.
Because that's part of the...
Within the rest of the appointments?
Yeah.
Didn't bring it to the town.
So, Dr. Murray, are you okay with that? That work okay with you? Probably, I would say probably next meeting, we have an answer on that, and go ahead and vote on it.
I would say whatever is in the best interest of the community. I trust the judgment, all five members of the select board, you know, I just respect all five of you. I think you're incredible, outstanding leaders, and whatever you see fit, I fully support. I'm here for the law and health, to support the town and our veterans in any capacity. And I'm actually running for select work to fill the big shoes of Dave Fuller. And I will be greatly, if selected, I'll be greatly leaning on his expertise and knowledge. So, yeah, I trust the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Well, now you've opened up a conundrum here. We have somebody else here that is also running for the same seat, as I understand. And being that you made that statement, I have to allow you to make the same, if you choose, DeForest.
Step right up there and say you're running. Someone's going to fill Dave's shoes.
He declared his candidacy for Dave's seat, and I know-
Yes, I am running for Dave's seat, but Dave can keep his shoes. I think I can find a pair of my own.
I just want to make sure that we stay fair with everybody. I don't want to... Well, it's... And also, in fairness, Dr. Murray, I know you very well. And we both prefer to follow policy. And I think we're following the right policy by saying, "Wait a minute, we didn't warn this change on the agenda." So, I don't want that to be a surprise, and we can handle that at our next meeting and then move forward at that time. Is the board okay with that? That sound about right there? All right, so that'll be added to the future agenda items. Brendan?
Okay.
Approve warrant.
Make the motion that we approve the warrant. If my voice doesn't go out before we get done here. General fund payroll, $27,617.18. Operating expenses, $40,217.37. Highway fund payroll, $11,611.65. Operating expenses, $27,235.89. Solid waste payroll, $3,040.90. Operating expenses, $21,532.50. Library payroll, $2,431.21. Grants, $9,408. ARPA, $2,524. FEMA, $7,357.50. Veterans Memorial Committee, $38.83, for a total of...
Thirty-four dollars.
Thirty-four dollars and 83 cents, for a total of $19,324.33. Total payroll, $44,700.94. Total operating expenses, $108,309.64.
Do I hear a second?
Second now.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on the warrants?
Oh, I got a page here.
A page?
Okay. On page 110 of 130. Why did Ryan Gumbert get two pays?
Real quick, one second. What was the page number again, Kelly? I'm sorry.
110 of 130.
It's the first, it's the first page of the warrant.
No, his fringe is on the next one.
So, I believe we missed his payroll the prior week due to the change from Windsor to Weathersfield. But, let me just confirm that really quick.
Want me to ask my next one, or are you looking?
One second, I'm almost done. Yes, that is correct. So-
Miss pay?
So, Ryan Gumbert was an employee of the town of Windsor. And then, effective January 1st, he moved over to the town of Weathersfield as an employee here. And then, we contract him to Rockingham.
So, he's only split two ways now instead of three?
Instead of three, yes. See, we had two employees, and we decided to move things around a little bit and have more of Ryan Gumbert's time in Weathersfield.
Page 112, two pages down. What is, what is that, Josh Doffin's pay? What is, is that his yearly amount?
Yeah, so Josh Doffin is a fire chief and the fire warden.
Yeah.
So, yes, that's his...
Okay. When you go a few more pages to 116, is that Derek's same thing? But, his is under, his is under the transfer station. Page 116.
I'm looking at 116. Where do you see transfer station?
Well, you got David Picknell and Tyler Waters.
I see.
And you got Derek Gurney. Derek Gurney doesn't work for the transfer station.
And that's not being booked to the transfer station fund. I'm not sure why that's there.
But, that's his.
So, that's just his fire chief stipend. So that's just his fire chief stipend.
Okay.
So he's only the fire chief. He's not a fire warden.
Okay. Page 120.
That's why the amounts are different. The amounts of the chiefs are the same.
This one goes page 120 and page 124. What are all these recognition award amounts that are up over $3,600?
Yep, so those are the gift cards for town employees and board members for the holidays.
Okay. Page 126. I'm not going to be here all night, I promise.
It's okay.
What is, what is the money for the Ripple Natural Resources for 9,400?
So this is a project that we received money from NRCS to repair storm damage. And you'll see, this is engineering. I think the total project cost is roughly $14,000 for the engineering, and then you'll see construction costs as well.
Is that what the heritage engineering one is that's in here? Oh, wait, I got another one in between before we get that far.
That's a different project. This one's funded through the USDA and NRCS to repair some ripper up on a stream behind someone's house. So the house is like on the corner of the stream.
Yeah.
And the stream's like caving in, and it's getting closer and closer to the house. I think there's only a foot between the edge of the house and the stream.
I remember this one.
So we're sponsoring the project. All the money comes through us. We do the requests for bids, and we hire the engineer, and then we pay out the invoices, basically. So it's a partial landowner NRCS split. The construction's fully funded.
Well, we're just doing the work. We're just doing the...
Yeah, the money has to come through the town, and then we pay the contractor, basically.
Remember the pictures of that? It looked like the, well, the brook was going right through the house.
Yeah, it's really close. We've been over there a bunch and...
I was just looking, I was just looking at the money here. The next one is on page 127.
Okay.
The next page, 127. What is the CCI Managed Services for 1858?
So that's part of the ARPA computer order. So when the Board approved the computers, they've been coming in small chunks.
You just had to tell me what, you don't have to go into detail. I don't want a story. I just want to know what the money went for.
He can't help it.
I know.
I feel like I need to give background.
My husband does that, and it drives me nuts. I just want to, just give me the basics. I don't want to hear a story. Page 128. The heritage engineering for $7,357.50.
Engineering.
For war.
You want to know?
I want to know what it's for. Don't have to just say what it's for. You don't have to go into detail, saying, oh, it did this to the bridge, or it did this to...
So this is engineering for Storm 4720, which is the July 2023 floods.
Okay, that's all I have.
Anybody else?
Sorry.
You're all right, Kelly. It's, you know, it's good, it's good that you have your eyes on those like that. Anybody else? Any discussion, any further discussion on the warrants? Hearing none, all in favor of the warrants signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? Any abstentions? None of those. Motion carries. It's unanimous. Executive session, that's supposed to be on here?
I don't think we need to do that.
What, yeah, I...
There was something you guys were carrying forward to discuss the Town Manager.
At this, at this point, it would be mute. Because the, yes, that's enough of that. Any other business? We have two things on here. Letter to the Board from Dave. That was an email. And the continuation of the salt shed to date to be determined. Let's take care of that part first, the salt shed discussion. We're just moving that to a date to be determined. Any idea?
I, I don't know. I'll have to reach out to them. Last time I reached out to them, they were going to be reaching out to Dave to get this.
Well, I was going to say, there's a whole bunch of stuff there, so... Correct me, is this any hearing?
No, it's just a...
It's just an agenda item?
The Board has to select an option. And when we discussed the options that were presented, the Board determined that the number of options that were presented wasn't sufficient.
Okay.
They're creating another option.
So this can let...
Dave had a model that he had seen and wanted to bring up.
So this can go under future agenda items with just the date to be determined listed with it?
There's a bigger problem. Last meeting, I voted no on the orders, but didn't say why. $12,000 went to pay two boys that came from engineering for this project. And if we didn't pick one of the three, we learned that we were on the hook for $50,000 worth of deeds, which was, like, came out of nowhere. And so, quite frankly, it's easier to scrap the whole thing and build the salt shed out of money than it is to go through this process. That's what I think. We're still going to be on the hook for $100,000 no matter what. So I don't, there's not going to be some magical design for me that says this works. Not with the choices were $500,000, $600,000, $750,000.
Well, I think you had talked about, right, because where it was the site and thinking about the truck movement of, right, when they're mixing sand and salt.
Yeah.
And some logistical concerns.
But aside, but aside from all of that, prior to getting there, we received a grant to do the study on this. And if we don't... Right now, we've received an extension, as I understand, which means we're not currently looking at being penalized for not moving forward with the study. And that's all the study does, is come back. Again, we can determine, we can determine a later date not to do anything. As long as we finish the study, the, there's a grant in place to pay for that study, and it won't cost us anything.
To pay for the $50,000.
Yes, and we won't be penalized.
I think that, I think, didn't you say this at the last meeting, that we had, or a month ago, that we had to pick one in order to fulfill everything? You got to go as a circle.
Well, the thing is, is it's a, it's a grant to design a salt shed and to determine what the town's option for a salt shed is. So we just have to complete, like, if we don't design a salt shed, then we didn't complete the scope of work in the grant. I think if this salt shed, if one of those three options isn't sufficient, then let's figure out what would be sufficient, and then they can design it, and then we fulfill, and might as well get it designed for free.
Correct, right. Right, so, so, so for now, for tonight, it's just a matter of taking this and moving it up to future agenda items with a date to be determined. And Dave, you're going to be involved with a conversation with them about what some of those concerns were. And, you know, I don't have a problem telling you I don't really disagree with you on the final outcome.
That money that we spent, is that from the $50,000 grant that we already got?
Yeah, so that's, that's being paid for through the grant.
That's grant money we already have, or is that grant money we're waiting for?
That's grant money that we, so we, the way that grants work is you pay the, you pay the invoice, and then you submit it for reimbursement. And then they just, they put the money in your account.
Which means if we don't finish the plan, we don't get the grant.
I don't, I don't know about that.
No? I thought that was...
I heard that. I mean, I think, I think I'd have to, I've never seen that before. Who said that?
They said that if we didn't select one of the options, that we weren't covered.
I don't know if I totally agree with that. I think, I think you could debate that. I don't remember signing anything that said that.
I thought, I thought so, too.
I did, I recall that, too.
But I mean, if, if it's not successful, if the Board's not happy with, with what's happening, I think the invoices to date would be paid through the grant, and then you could stop it. But I don't see why you would do that.
I'd go pretty far on that. I, I just think it's a white elephant. And I would say that if you're out 12 grand, that you cut your losses and move on and take it out of the 80-day fund. I really do. I feel that strongly about the, you can make mistakes. It's great that you've got that money, but that else is coming in. But there's some serious lack of money that's set aside for that. And if you put it in perspective, half a million dollar salt shed isn't in the cards.
I do think that even if we design, if the Board would like to design a cheaper one, the good thing about this grant is that we have flexibility on what the design is. So I think if we work with them to get the design, I think to raise point in the past is if we have a design, then we can get grant money for a salt shed.
So you could give them an idea that what you think?
So I think the, the goal is to obtain funding for a salt shed and with a design, any design, $100,000 design.
So I'm going to, I'm going to suggest the word kind of off, right? We're just setting when we're going to talk about this. Not actually solving it.
That's correct.
Race should be here, right? We should... So I, I think we're just setting the date.
But we can't set a date yet. I think we put it on as a future agenda item. And then I'll work with the engineer on when he can...
And I'll...
So if he's set a date and he's not able to be here, then...
I will add, I will add date to be determined to that item under there, so we know that it's...
Right.
Yep.
We have a deadline based on the extension.
In other words, you're going to see this thing float on here until we say we're putting it on the agenda. And that's it. Okay. Now to Dave's...
Can I add something else real quick before you do that?
Yes.
The water system. Have we gotten the paperwork and stuff for all the people who bid on that? Because I haven't heard anything more on that.
For the water system?
For the...
Oh, for, for the RFE. So we're still waiting on the bond bank to release the project. So it'll be coming soon.
Okay, that's all I had.
Yep.
Okay, Dave?
Yes, I addressed the Board a letter and have since thought a lot about it. And I will send an email out to the Board in the morning so that I can handle that. I'm dropping a letter that I noticed here today after the last meeting. I think that's the best way for me to handle it.
Dave, I do, and like, I do think this meeting felt much better as far as the interplay and kind of how everybody was feeling treated.
Sorry, I didn't hear your name.
Just the way the dynamic of the Board, as far as everybody is... I had a kid's race yesterday. Maybe I got a little excited. Well, good. It's been a lot of basketball and hockey, and I noticed Dave hasn't shown up to the last couple of basketball games.
Just hold it right there, that's the mark. Because I was at the game where your stepdaughter, Zara, got the last basket, and you were not there.
That may have happened.
And cheering, the cheering went wild.
I only go to the ones where she doesn't play, so it's...
I was there, and I did the wave.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Omo.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.